Okay. The City of Creosote Springs will need a regular session on Tuesday, August 1st, 2016, at 6:00. And City Hall Municipal Building, 308 West Virginia Street, Creosote Springs, Texas, 78834. Item number 1, call meeting to order. It is 6 o'clock. We'll go to item number 2, we'll have established for the Forum, it's right to my right.
Yes, you're drawing some.
Dino, Heda, Bambada.
Sandra.
Forum is established. We'll go to item number 3, welcome and recognition of guests. Thank you all for meeting tonight's meeting. Thank you. We're at item number 4, collective allegiance.
To flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, omnipotent, and just as for all.
Item number 5, citizen comments. Citizen comments are limited to 3 minutes. Deanna, Nandi. Oh, okay. We go to item number 6, approval minutes. We have special session June 25th, 2016, special session June 28th, 2016, special session July 5th, 2016, regular session July 12th, 2016, special session July 14th, 2016, and special session July 21st, 2016. I'm gonna say I have one from what I saw.
I have one picture. On, um, I don't know.
I have a funny picture.
On June 28th.
Item 6.
Uh, I want to turn to the rest of the state. I put it all on item number 6.
There's a second one?
Yeah, that was... That was my error. It was kind of easy to do that because if you go to page 2, that item. Item 6.
I'm sorry, 6?
Yes, of the June 28th meeting.
Yes.
Item 6.
You should have stayed in till now?
Yes.
Since it was already voted on, I mean, because an approval of a minute is just an approval that that is what occurred, not to change what occurred. So I think that we just move forward.
Forward to the record.
Um, I'm gonna start on my mind. What I saw on page 8 of regular session July 12th. Uh, item 21. Right at the end. Sofia, while the state of the residents will not be taxed and the city will have a new facility at no cost to the city, can we change that to community taxpayers?
I think that's just... You are correct.
Instead of no cost to the city, they look to the community taxpayers.
Oh, okay. That was my question. I wanted to make sure that I'm not mistaken.
But that's all I have from... I'm gonna need to change to 2, 49, item 8, yeah?
You'll make a motion for a holdout next special session June 28th, 2016, special session July 28th, 2016, special session July 5th, 2016, regular session July 1st, 2016, and special session July 14th, 2016, and special session July 21st, 2016.
How's the nominee? I continue to draw a second? Second is by conference and balances. On Wednesday, I'm gonna say 9. All across the same sign. I'm gonna turn this page. We go to item number 7, discussion of the corporate action share plan accounts payable for the month of July 2016. I'm gonna flip this. Our packet is kind of big. Can we get tabs? Can we get tabs?
Hold it short.
Thank you.
Mr. Gaddati, I did review. That's a my move to face by face and then you meet. So with that said, is there any, uh, bill that you want to elaborate on? Do you think that it's just a one-time expense or is it...
Well, we do have one major expense, uh, that's the ordinance and just related to the wastewater treatment extension project. And that invoice is for only $1,142,000.
But we know that because...
We know that because, uh, we met with the USDA, it was USDA building, uh, in the construction contract documents. And, uh, USDA agreed that this is a term of term of bill. We did have an increase in the, uh, city attorney fees. However, those were due to various charter commission meetings that were held over the next several months in preparation for upcoming charter election.
Would that be the only reason for the high increase for these or less support or some...
In reviewing the invoice, that that's primarily the reason for the increase.
On that note, page 2, 12 American points, page 1 for August the 22nd. It's a typo, I suppose.
Yes.
Doesn't forget, 2016.
Mr. Gaddati, the format of the bills are, is it to what we have requested? So all that we are seeing in front of us is what is old?
That's correct.
Sorry, pardon me?
Pardon me. Uh, what we had, uh, attempted to do was highlight those items that have already been received and approved by the city council. And, uh, we hope that they're highlighted and addressed.
Highlighted.
Even a new column with a check mark or something?
Yes.
Something. That's why the snow will go ready. I have a question off the guy's CMI consulting engineers. Um, 4915, is that it? That's almost paid, you know?
Uh, yes, that's also related to the wastewater treatment construction project. And, uh, that's where we're going on the existing clarifier. Of course, it not qualified for USDA loans. Where funds are actually being out of, uh, well, you're creating a plant project in the cities, but not in the loan.
So 49 was for the existing, the old one?
Yes, the old part. There was a, there was a change order to the project, uh, required by TCQ. And so that change order required that the city actually spend funds in its own to work on the third part.
And they have some payments to them. Are we done paying here before we start paying the engineers?
Uh, we are current with the engineer that's working on the extension of the, uh, the expansion of the, uh, repair of the existing clarifier. This is just current. Uh, this is the last of the bills, a little over $409,000. Except for paying the... The payments for the $409,000 that is included by Garcia and Wright, uh, for the work that's being done in the existing clarifier.
And you, everything, and you, this one wants to...
Yes, that's correct. And there are also project engineers for the, uh, for the expansion of the construction of the new wastewater treatment. And that's what $40,000 that, uh, that's from the packet. It's actually being paid to anybody. Anybody around 100,000, at least that's a project that's being paid by Garcia.
Just go back to this, you have $4,142,15 goes to USDA?
No, that goes to the project agent. It's also, Mr. Garcia, that Mr. Estabroz will take the engineer for the project. He told, uh, there was a change order issued to the project to repair the existing wastewater treatment. So he's actually doing the extension or the, uh, repair of the existing, uh, plus construction of the new wastewater treatment. So doing both projects.
Can you share some information on the contract?
We have a five-year capital lease with the Catator, Tractor, and the Atlanta. We're in the fifth year of that lease. We are behind on some things. We're thinking of getting paid for those things. Uh, we recently may have paid $20,000, uh, about a week ago. Within the next couple of weeks, uh, we'll need to make another payment in the middle of $40,000. Since we're in the last year of the five-year lease, we need to continue making those payments. So at the end of this year, we'll actually own that piece of property.
So the $57,000 that you're saying, what are the payments?
That's the total. Since the first quarter of this fiscal year, so we fell behind in April, we believe. We're paying this for $12,500 a month. Uh, we fell behind about, uh, almost six months. We issued payments for $3,000 and there'd be a $5,000 payment. So we actually do this, but we'll still be behind a little bit, but not as much as we are now.
Apple Thomas, the time clock part of this, it's something like an internal fund. It's 1500. Is that something every month we have to pay versus in?
More than, uh, a little on the time clock. Is that a month or...
No, I believe it's for your, um, yearly clockwork.
So it's a, it's a one-time expense?
Well, it's a year. And that system is for everybody or just by a person?
It's for everybody.
No, it's for everyone.
Page 3 of, uh, the financial consultant. What we use those for? We have proper assistance.
They're, uh, working on the N-code installation. That's the new accounting software that the city is switching over to. We had an audit, uh, last year that recommended the accounting software rather than criticals. And so the city council approved the contract to install an N-code accounting software. We're in the middle of doing that now and hopefully we can include it in the next, as far as software installation.
And it's ready to move into place, sir?
Yes, it's, uh, N-code is actually going to be here all month, the month of August. And here in that month, there'll be transferring data from criticals to N-code as well as providing services.
And so now, uh, it's N-code, you're going to try and prepare proper and associate?
No, actually, the proper is, uh, is the consultant that is retaining, monitoring the implementation and actually participating in the transfer of data from criticals to N-code. N-code is the software that we're using and they're here to train our folks on how to use that software and assist in the implementation of the transition from criticals to N-code software.
The backup, the training, right? Two, the minimum two?
Well, we've got the two right now. The finance right here and, and now the specials.
The ambulance, do we catch up in that?
Uh, no, we're not. There's not a month. We're attendants. The county's taking hits for, uh, the service. So it's a three-year program, uh, in the second year, actually the final year for the contract. Uh, doing a budget for this last year. There's no participation in the city. It's pending to the county for that service. So we'll talk about that later.
Can you look up then?
The Stellman, I'll say, professional services.
Uh, Stellman, who's our, our financial advisor, uh, that assisted the, uh, the USDA loan project. They prepared the prospectus for the issue. And, uh, basically advises, uh, on debt service requirements, tax rates, tax levies that need to be set in order to meet the city's required debt service requirements to retire bonded and certificate of obligation there.
One-time shot? Take that with you, Steve.
They'll, they'll, uh, they'll give you the bill as, as they go, the bill is for issue. So we did the USDA issue and, uh, and the others for that issue. The city issued any additional debt in the future. And, uh, they will assist with preparation of prospectus and go up and market the, uh, the issue for sale.
Captain, final one. We are counting pennies and stuff. When they use the phones or, or we, uh, they can, and basis for it, we have some things, you know, Aromar, get a bill there. This, uh, we, we put on distinct aspect of...
Well, we had met with Aromar to, uh, what I was, was a discombating, uh, for everything. And, uh, we hit iron down our differences and issues in terms of the quality of services. See, they turned in, uh, the, uh, the, uh, just the city employees are not wearing anything. And part of the reason was because they turned them in and were getting that. And so at times, I mean, they actually didn't seem to... We ironed out our differences, but, uh, because we are pinching pennies, uh, we do owe them some money. And, uh, so they need to be, they need to be paid to continue that service. And I'm not sure that we ever would agree with, uh, the group that have the contract with this part of Aromar.
So does still have to be in some contract at this point?
Yes. And, uh, once we pay Aromar, uh, we'll, uh, we'll, uh, provide employees with, uh, what you think are quality products provided through a quality service. As opposed to what they're wearing, they are wearing.
You also have any records on those, uh, for a second? I'm gonna make one come in a little. Okay, Renegade, I say 9. All across the same sign. We go to item number 8, discussion of corporate action share plan detailing rate analysis. Mr. Jeff Snowden.
My good Thomas, man, it feels like, uh, with the construction of the new wastewater pit, uh, which was acquired by the Texas Commission on Environmental Quality, TCQ, we're adding debt service, uh, to, uh, to the city's outstanding certificates of obligation. And so we're required to pay these, these debts. And, uh, these relate back to the USDA loan heard the city took a loan for $6.6 million constructed tonight. We're going to have, uh, and we are already paying as of August the 1st of this year, interest on that debt. Our first principal payments will be February of this coming year. And, uh, so the purpose of the rate study and the city council retaining Mr. Snowden was to give the city council an idea of what impact those debt service requirements are going to have on the rate structure for both water and wastewater. That's the only comment I have.
I have to back the reasons. Is it clear for me to be over here? So can you block the screen?
It's hard to see.
Yeah, but you're welcome. I'm glad to be over here. And this will be informal. Please stop me at any time. Questions? Our rate study objectives, looking, I looked at your water, your sewer and your natural gas rates. And I also did a rate study for you in 2011. Set you on a, your, your rates at that time. Of course, now we've got this new loan, $61,000, $6.6 million. The wastewater treatment plant, which we had planned on. So we've got generated enough money to pay your operations costs and pay that debt service. And it's all debt, there's no grant. So this is the summary of what I look at when I do a study. I look at your billing and your, your system and your audits and, uh, your water production reports, your sewage treatment reports and volumes. I can speak to those in detail. This is a five-year summary, that's a nine-year summary, of the amount of water that you treat and pump versus what you sell through the meter. And just to demonstrate, you did go through a new meter program in the last few years. If you look at fiscal year 07, you sold about 67% of the water you treat that's going to the meter. Last year, which ended June 30th, you sold 88%. So you had a 12% loss ratio, much, a huge improvement and puts you in one of the better performing cities that I work with in terms of water losses. So you are managing your resource, which is water, and managing well within meters. This is your history of account growth. Now since you're adding 56 accounts a year, modest growth rate, and I'm forecasting that it will continue to be, to go modestly. Senior citizens is a interesting customer class. You see, they're going by 2.5% a year. Since I did the last study, there was a, a senior citizen discount that was offered to the residents. I am not finding any ordinance to support it. It looks like the free discounts are offered. It's a 25% across the board, just down for all water consumption. That's the, uh, that's the richest subsidy I've ever seen for senior citizen customer class. And what that does, what that has done basically since I did the study in 2011, your revenues went up and then they went back down for water. Reason is, is everybody else, their rates went up and their expenses went up, but senior citizens went down so much that it almost offset the entire rate increase. And again, I didn't find where the senior citizen discount is, supported by an act of the council reordance. So it looks like something that was done in form over since 2011 and it's really hurt your revenues. Apparently you're serving 2,097 water customers, 1,901 sewer customers. In addition to the service you provide to Creoso Hills, which they also have another 280 sewer customers that discharge in your system.
I have a question.
Yes, ma'am.
So, dear representative, are you going to answer some of the objectives that you have?
Absolutely, yes.
Right now, right now, the city of Creoso Hills, and I'm seeing this each customer class introducing a different show of revenue.
We're, we're going to, Creoso Hills is a little odd because they're wholesale customers governed by a 1997 wholesale agreement. You don't get those exact flows. You get a summary each month. Right now, they pay you $17 on account, basically for, uh, sure. I'm gonna recommend that that change and be, 17 is fair for residential, but if it's not fair for actual, now they need 7% of the same. So I recommend that on a commercial basis, that that's any valid fine, if you negotiate that. I think it's a body of their agreement within. I think that that's a fair request and I'll let your attorneys work it out with you. They do discharge a, a specific volume into your sewer system and of course you're paying for a branded sewer plant. The contract provides for them to pay that fair share.
That, that would be only right because, I mean, the, our customers inside the city, you know, they, they want to get here with increases, but they remain at the same, what is it, 1997 rate? So it's not fair to the citizens.
Councilman, they've gone up a little since 97, but not enough to track how much has gone up within the city. Certainly not enough to, to offset the end cost of the sewer plant. So I think it's reasonable to renegotiate that rate.
I have one more question. So when we go back to the senior citizen. So you're at, you're recommending that we have an, so that we stay the same cost rate? I basically can, my answer is, we do.
For the seniors?
I made it.
I, I haven't found that. I found the signup sheet. I found a signup sheet for the 25% discount for water, but I haven't found what's supported by the ordinance. Not, I made it.
Did you ask the senior?
No, I asked the rest of them that I didn't ask the senior.
So there's, yeah, no, there is. I made it.
For the whole 25% for minimum man volume method. Um, did I answer that last question? This is the, yes, sir. Which, I see, I'll go to you. Inside city limit, outside city limit? Yes, sir.
And there's numbers, no, sorry. Has guys added that here? Those are new customers from October.
There, you see, the far right column, average new, number of new accounts per round? Is that what you're asking me about?
The other ones, the fiscal year ones. Is that the total amount?
That's total number of customers that you serve on, on an average basis in 2010. You took your total bills for each business year divided by 12, for monthly, that's what you get.
Something happened in 2010, 11, 2012.
You had a transition in your old billing system to the new one called Daniel. Which now you're transitioning out of the N-code. There were some holes in the Daniel data. I guess that's not the case. There were, there was, uh, there was no history from this time you went there. Is the USDA was old?
Uh, it wasn't that. But, yeah, we transitioned to a new software. That's for a lot of that.
That explains that. And I will say that the system that you're going to N-code is the best. They're going to eliminate a lot of staff headaches and reporting issues that they have every month. That's the, that's really the best software out there. So you're going to be pleased with it. Any additional questions? I'll move on then.
I got one with Creoso Hills. On the number of, or the rates for, I think Mr. Gaddati had a discussion of that.
On the number of water records, is it based on that?
Yeah, well, one of the fees is based on the number of water records. And that's the number of, so they're paying $17 for the hookup. But there's another fee in the contract, the 1997 contract, that states that there'll also be a payment based on the impact of the number of tie-ins to the system on the operation and maintenance of a wastewater treatment plant. And the reason being is you want to be able to recover funds so that at some point in time, as the plant depreciates, you can accumulate revenues to help replace that plant with a new one. And it doesn't appear, from reviewing our records today, that that's ever been done since 2010. And so.
So they pay the same rate as then, regardless of the certain percent or any type of treatment.
Yeah, it looks like half of the fees that are owed us would be paid. And perhaps the city attorney can look at the contract and we can sit down with Carizo Hills.
They give us a number of, a number of hookups?
Yes, that would be, I think we had 280.
We don't know that's true.
Never done it. A physical head count? No, I mean, there've never been a physical.
When they, sorry, when they mail you your check every month, they attach to it a printout from their billing system, which is an RBS billing system. And it says the total amount of water produced, total amount sold. And then it's got total water customers and they black that out and it's got purchaseable customers. And they allow you to see that. So it was $290, $280, something, most recent. It comes out to $17 a month per month. And that's close to being fair for residential. That equates to about 8,700 gallons, which is about what your winter average water use. We like to base the sewer bill on winter average water usage. So average water usage from December, January and February, typically you carve out any car washing and lawn mowing or lawn watering. That's a clean picture of what's discharged to the services. For you, a five-year average is 8,700 gallons a month for residential. And that equates to the $17. So they're close for residential. I would recommend that they escalate up over the next five years. Be patient with your rest of your residential customer, commercial there. That's your opportunity there.
So, why would, why do you think they would black out their residential? I mean, yeah, you say that we're only able to see our sewer. But if they're hooked to their water, their sewer, so would that be, or are there still people with such a technical error?
Your contract doesn't, doesn't provide for any payment based on volume, just customer count. So I can see why they'd want to jack that for volume. Maybe you want, that was a 30-year contract, your contract dated 97. Got a little bit more. I would definitely, like I said, I'd go out, my, my employees here, I ask them, we said earlier about commercial, I think you do that, of course, that's a lot more. Your, your average, winter average residential is 8,700 gallons. Commercial's close to 30,000 gallons in the city. So that gives you a feel for the volume with the same.
Can I ask why those winter payments are just set the rate, just set the gallons? Why those and that's the logistic number?
That's typically the industry standard when you're studying winter averages, from December, January and February, which typically the month where you don't see as much irrigation. So our closest, I'll just look at the water.
No, that's not my, that's not my area at all, but at least.
You want a, you want a clean picture of the amount of the water that comes out of the tap, how much ultimately goes to the sewer system. So if someone asks you, thank you, a lot of it's going to go in the water yard and the wash cars and the other things. Whereas in the winter months, you have more direct connection with water. This next slide is just a, a history of 2010 and 2017. Revenue expenses. You can see where you're going with revenue by two and a half percent. Gas has actually gone down by. Water's gone up by 2.4, sewer by 8.7. So your sewer system has been generating more revenue. But all in all, you grew revenues by two and a half percent a year over those seven years. Expenses grew by four and almost five percent, almost double. Keeping in mind, with your team led by Mr. Gaddaby, they just changed the budget. So evidently you've cut a lot of expenses for this next fiscal year. So that helps quite a bit. You shaved off a lot of expenses. But still, this gives you a feel for the trend. You don't want your revenues to be flatlining, your expenses to be exceeding those. And that's where we have to watch for when we're looking at this trend.
I have a question. Polities, just an act of economic, that's why. Why would it say in 2009 and 10, all the way to 2013, you're going to be?
Is that on the Carizo Hills sewer sales?
I don't want to buy it.
No, I didn't have the data going back to those years. I didn't get it from the audit until I was at 1450, so that's when I started putting it in the system. I'm sure you got paid for them back then, but I didn't have it in audit for one day.
Was that also in the?
That would make our percentage growth, the revenue, a little higher. Not tremendously high, but.
So is there anywhere, any kind of argument, whether it means?
Oh, yeah. I, I would, I would.
I just want to be a fair, I want to be fair. I think everyone, they pay, they're paying much.
I mean, it might be, it might be that prior to Daniel, the old billing system captured that thing. And it's included in the water stuff, in the service. But anyway, I'll, I'll debate on that.
And total other charges for services?
Other charges for services are cap fees, connection fees, late charges, credit card processing fees, after-hours reconnection fees, everything that's not a rate revenue that a utility charge is for service. And canopies, when you're signed as a real communication company, non-managed, and on the other storage plant. That would be a fee. I think that's a general term here. But that's an example of a fee of, of revenue that the water and sewer system generates that's not from rates. This is your current and proposed water and sewer debt. And really this is, I think, the reason that y'all called me. You can see in 2016, you're going to have $109,000 of debt service, $109,448. This is the first call and second to the last. Beginning in 17, that goes to 282,000 during that fiscal year. And then, that the following year, once you, your loan starts to fully amortize, your water sewer debt goes to $333,000. And it stays that way all the way up to 2030. You have a, you have a CR2019, it goes 333 to 302. That, you have a series 78 loan that was paid off and gave you some relief in, in 2019. With that exception, you're really looking at this level of debt service all the way to 2030. But that's the new normal for your system due to this $66 million loan from USDA for the sewer. But just, and it's a 40-year loan that can do. So how do we get your system raised for going from $100,000 a year in debt service to $330,000? This is your cash flows, assuming you leave the rates the same. You leave, don't touch your rates. When you start paying this USDA loan back, all without a cut. This, third fiscal year, you would be negative by $123,000. Following year, you'd be negative by $191,000. And that grows to $200,000 year from 2019. I want to take a second to point something out on this. Do you see your total expenses to your? This is what you budgeted in 2015. This is what your team put together for this current experience. They looked at your expenses and really touched and made adjustments so that the revenue needed to pay the debt service is not as much as it was going to be if you would pay at that level. I wanted to point that out to you. Why did, how were you able to cut those expenses while you're not paying for a monthly rental on the total water treatment, or wastewater treatment? That helps a lot. Just sign a new retail electricity agreement to cut your cost of purchased electricity. I think it's $7,000, $100,000. Yes, there's, there's 100 line items in there and your staff has worked to cut them. That helped bring the break down from this. All the way down to capital outlays. If you look at the capital outlays, which is the second to the last growth, $64,800 in capital outlays for the previous fiscal year, left up to $5,000 this year. And the capital outlays, you buy trucks and things that you appreciate. So you can see that item has dropped. And there may be some capacity to increase that later on, but right now, the direction is to really cut expenses so that your system can pay the new debt and not raise rates to an affordable level for your customers. Counsel, I wanted you to ask about subsidies. This is the 15, 16 misses, a picture of all of your water customer classes. And red indicates a customer class that receives a subsidy. Green indicates customer class that provides a subsidy. So residential, inside city land customers, they contributed 43% of the revenue and used 51% of the water. Senior citizens, you contribute 13% of the revenue, use 60% of the water. And where did that subsidy come from though? Commercial inside city limits is the main divider, as is outside city. Commercial inside provides 31% of the revenue and uses 25% of the water. Commercial customers are helping with the residential and helping, certainly helping with the senior citizens on their side. I couldn't counsel them and add Carizo Hills into this because I don't have, see that water volume there, the third column to the right? I don't have that beta for them, but I would have it. But they're not a water customer, so you wouldn't know what goes through the meter.
Okay, so at the end, you want us to know if there's best routes to stay at 25% of the water usage? Or seeking for?
I would recommend, I would recommend, yes, it's coming right. This is a quick comparison of Carizo Springs to cities around you. And I really picked a lot of cities that are illegal for chill, which are good comparisons. And you can see the peer group average is $65.33. That's the combined bill for water and sewer, $10,000 gallons of usage. You're at $10.33 below that, Carizo, $55 currently, based on the rates that they're placing. If you look at, all the way to the left, Carizo, senior citizens, they're at $45.33. With the exception of Eagle Pass Water Works, senior citizens just. And that, by the way, theirs applies to both water and sewer, yours is on the water, there's $25. That's the, the most aggressive discount subsidy offered by any of these number six. A lot of them don't have a, a subsidy for services. So you can see here, you've got the two of, right at where you are. They're, they're in the middle of the rate plan. That's one of my clients. I just, here's some. Delia's one of my clients. They're up here. Higher rates. But you can see, here's U-Valley, here's George West, here's Eagle Pass. Eagle Pass is on a third read, on the second reading or three readings, where they will be adopting a five-year rate plan that I provided for them, which is supporting $45 million additions that they're working on right now. So their rates are going to be going up. Here's all of, in the middle of the rate plan. Laredo is, Laredo's only a few percent of where you're. The point of this slide is, you can demonstrate that the residential customers can provide a very good value and very competitive in the context of the cities around you. And they're legal for chill. A lot of these cities are, with the same challenges, the subtax has gone down. Some of the businesses dried up, some of the one that's dried, gone down. So these are good peer groups compared, it's very good.
Is that your average, the PG, average, the green one? Is that what that is, the PG?
The $65.33 is the peer group average for the entire group.
Can I ask, if you consider any of that, what type, 39 first here is on the bar, correct?
The 4539 is their entire bill based on water and sewer, $10,000 gallons. But their water bill is, is a 25% subsidy. They get, they get billed 75% for what residential.
That's what I'm saying. So you're saying in depth of order that we pass is only for water? Each year, is that, or not the water?
Just, there's no discount for shit.
Do you have the city center include the water and sewer?
Yes, Eagle, Eagle Pass provides a subsidy for both the water and sewer. And the way they do it, and the way I'm recommending you do it here, your, what, each of your rate components, for water and sewer, you've got a minimum charge for the first, right now, $3,000 down, I'm recommending $2,000. And then you've got a volumetric rate. How much do they pay $3,000 down to use? I'm recommending for minimum charge, that you provide a 25% subsidy. But on the volumetric rate, I'm recommending that that be the same as your charge for that's in charge. That way you provide the same incentive for server owners than for all of the classes.
As we're getting to the waters.
I'm recommending that it apply to the water. And I've got some forecast numbers of what kind of subsidy they would receive with these rates.
Do you have them with you now?
I've got them with my recommendations.
So they give them that, that requires respect?
No, I've, I've got, the 20, the five-year forecast I have has them receiving a 25% discount just on the minimum charge. But not on the $4,000, not on the $4,000.
Are you ready to provide a report, right, sir? Which are going to show us tonight in the order of care. In the game of the Congress and this kind of research, but he's going to talk.
For the sewer? For the minimum charge only or for all usage? For both?
Just, I mean, just to have a fourth.
I could do that, but it's going to really affect your residential rate, which I'm going to talk about now. Anytime you subsidize, anytime you have a subsidizing, you got to have a subsidizer. And, but I can certainly do the exercise. I'd be glad to make that presentation to you on the next. This is the five-year rate plan that I'm recommending for your residential customers. And the bottom line is $3.47 on each month. So right now, you're $55 a month for $10,000 gallon usage. I recommend that I go to $58.74 beginning September on. We missed the first month of the fiscal year, July 1. So after that, I'm recommending I might be enacted each July, since we missed that this year. $3.74, so we go to $58.74 for each month. The following year, it would go about $3.47. You can see that that goes up for five years. And the average of five years, nothing going, which is $3.47. Now, I need to say, I'm recommending a five-year series of increases. If we get to year four, and the revenue is sufficient to pay the debt, to pay your operating, it's not uncommon for a council group that has adopted this. it's not uncommon for a council to think that it has adopted this rate to say, we don't need year four and five, or it happens frequently, but my recommendation for the council is to adopt the rates that's recommended and then the future council replacements will say, hey, we've got enough, we're generating more than the revenue, let's bypass your. You can see that if you use more water, 50,000 gallons, the increase is more. So the more water you use, the more you pay, that's the already blocked rate structure, to encourage conservation. Next slide, what would happen if you adopted these rates and the rest of the cities around you raised their rates by 3% a year over the next five years? As I mentioned, a lot of these cities and our customers are raising their customer rates by more than 3%, but still. 3% is a very conservative forecast estimate. After the next five years, which would get to fiscal year 21, the peer group average would have increased to $77 a month for 10,000 gallons. You'd be at almost $5 less than $77.37. Your senior citizens would be at $61.83. Still providing a very generous subsidy for senior citizens, almost 10,000 rest of the west. I'm glad to answer questions, I can move on to my commercial areas recommendations.
I just find $17 being very, very impossible on water. I mean, we, we live these last three, these months in this past, 2015, 16, and that's what it came up with. How did you get, I just, did you say 8,700 gallons? It just seems so, super low, I can't, just washing hands.
Seventeen dollars is what I give them, the check you get from Torizo Hills, and divide that amount by the number of wastewater customers that they throw on their state. That's it, that comes to $17 per gallon per month that they pay you. If I take $17 and I run it through your sewer rate book, it's about what you pay when you live here and you use 8,700 gallons of water. So, it's fairly residential this year, wouldn't be a competition, but it's not even close to what you gotta pay for commercial and apparently there is. There's several commercial accounts that discharge from the Torizo system in your sewer. Of course, that's the volume that's leading you to have to borrow $6,500,000 for 40 years to not fill the new containers. Does that help? Next are your commercial rates. Same peer group, 50,000 gallons of combined water and sewer. Right now, your average commercial rate payer, in Torizo, uses 30,000 gallons a month. Why did I use 50? Because these cities report to the PML, and they've got a survey, and the survey gives you where possible, 50 and 200,000, so that allows you to get this larger peer group. So, on average, at 200,000 gallons, or 50,000 gallons a month of water and sewer, the average is $303 a month. You're over $50 below that, $247. You're lower than Petula. We'll hide the pure salt. You can see the rail is hiding, the utility's hiding, the crime city, the squirrel, that wheel is very high. So you can demonstrate to your commercial ratepayers right now for water and sewer, that they really receive a great value, similar to those differences. The percentage increases I'm recommending for commercial are very close to the percentage increases for residential, 5.5% a year. On average, their bill is about $15, $15.33 a month. Right now, they're at 247, they would go to 258 a month for 50,000 gallons. You can see if they're less, like a barber shop, barber shop might only use 30,000 gallons, that would be at $4.50. They go from 82 to 87. But the larger users of water and sewer services will pay more. And what would happen, so you gotta go from 247 to 323. Keeping in mind that we may not need all five years rate increases, but it's my job to give you the full picture and allow you to make adjustments when you need to make. So if you went to $323.31 over the next five years, where would that put you in relation to this 22 member peer group? If they raised rates by 3% a year, they'd be at $355 a month, you would still be $30 below. As I mentioned to you, Eagle Pass is on a five-year rate plan, they're gonna raise rates by more. Petula is. Rales on 2%, so you'll actually, they'll probably come closer to peer group. All these cities are dealing with the same challenges. So 3%, I think we can defend the rate, so. This is your pro forma cash flow. If these rates go into place, and very important, if you hold the line on expenses over the next five years, I have expenses going, basically going to happen 2% a year, so there's no room in here for big jumps in expenses. We've already cut tremendously, so if you want 2.5 to 1.7, and you can see that the expenses, I mean, if you were to come in next year and adopt a larger budget that had 5% growth in it, and shoot the rate plan, you'd be upside down here. It's very lean. So even with this, you can see, you'd have a slight deficit next year for this current year of $42,000, and make the debt service. Following year, you would have a surplus of $7,000. Then it would grow to 116,000, which is probably legitimate, if you have capital holders that will need that. So 203 to 303 in a year five. And again, if this council, future council gets together in 2020 and says, we don't need to generate that kind of surplus, you can always act to bypass your shore and five-year rate increases. Here's some recommended next steps. I really recommend that you expedite, expedite to the extent you can, go under LIMCO. I think you're gonna generate a lot of revenue just from that conversion. Look at your non-rate fees and charges, your management's looking for personal, make sure that you look for franchise fees and other things, and make sure that all your revenue opportunities are reviewed. Formalize pending debt structure. You know, there's every city that qualifies that grant component, it's, it's, I was about to ask you something.
I was gonna ask, it's too late to apply for grants.
I flew down here, next to your bond camps, today, why not be ready, we had that very conversation, you didn't know the answer to that, I asked. You borrowed the money from the USDA, intently, there's no guarantee that you can do it when you borrow money from the USDA. So, going through the law development process, trying to qualify for their loan forgiveness program, I've seen the light of working for. There's a whole discussion on that, but we'd buy qualifies right now for some kind of grant, seems like it would be. $6.6 million for our own sewer has revenue. Of course, it's my job to incorporate your staff and your council comments, got one, which is to gain the level of senior citizen subsidy support. I'm glad to do that, come back with that presentation. Give you that impact and how that, that $3.47 increase on the added residential bill, if that would go up, it would more generous than senior citizens. Work with your ratepayers, so make sure that they understand why this is happening, the steps you're taking. And then, of course, drafting the rate limits. I was hired to also look at managing gas rates, see if we can make adjustments there to provide some additional revenue that help towards this bill. And I don't, managing gas rates right now are at the level where we're not recommending adjustments to those. We would recommend when you start building, right now, if you buy, the problem with that is you're buying very wet types of gas, delivering very wet gas to you, which is high-energy gas, so it doesn't take as long to boil water or dry clothes, but it's got more energy. So you need to sell the gas in some form to buy it, so I'm gonna recommend when you get in for it, other than running, for each month. You convert the MCFs that you need to use, so you're not buying super unmetted, it's regular use. Carro, got that, Petula does that, Pure Salt is dealing, out here, it's any of my gas rate customers, got that, just consistent way to sell the same way. Especially because you're taking delivery of very wet gas, you need to do that, not have the losses, the loss, the increase of the losses. That's the end of my prepared comments, I'm glad to answer your questions, thank God we're out there with your sources. No, no, I see, I see there are people here, just, that system is such a superior system to what we have now. Now, mainly just saying that from staff standpoint, I said, building ladies have to physically transcribe, you can pay a lot of money for these automated meters. They're supposed to dump the reading straight into the building system. They could have to, if you have an office transcription, they're in the line, and of course, it's a job you come there, it's a lot of work. So it's just gonna allow them to do their jobs more efficiently, look at rates and look at revenues and how it's in time, and they're like, busy work. You paid good money for them.
So we can go, just pull it in and do calculations. Because we're not even here, timeline on that, like, say we're here, and then drop it. You wanna me the timeline, I mean, when should we be recording?
I would say a couple of months.
Payroll should take off by the other month, the billing, maybe not until beginning of the year.
Billing will be the, is the last, you can't.
And that is more to.
Might be, because that's the way.
There are so many accounts, it's gonna be time consuming.
Payroll is like, 55, 60 employees, billing is much larger, accounts data, so it takes longer because we have accounts to deal with as far as transferring data from our current system. We'll try to get through that process as quickly as possible, but we've also reorganized, reclassified, and we've got some staff that are in those trees, so that is something to be able to answer.
Can you say, is it, it's being keyed in manually, or is it probably uploaded and downloaded? Usually transferring the information to him. How is that being?
It's a manual transfer?
It's manual, everything has to be made in.
That's basically what we're doing right now with payroll.
That's what's all kinds of.
So we're having to, key in all the data entry into payroll, right now, that's how it's working. Everything's sitting key into payroll, apart from your everyday duties, you start to continue with payroll.
And the other question is, Ms. Vali, do you know about the number of expressives? I want to let you mention that, right? On the number of expressives.
Oh, the number of expressives. We'll look into it, the system's very complex and complicated. I know that we had, we had passed a plan to the beautiful, the off-line program. So funding for water line program, replacing older lines and older lines. And so that's another potential source of a 100% grant, as opposed to a loan that's not given. But we're looking at those sources of potential revenue, and I see a really, hopefully, a research that lowers our expense.
Is there any way that you can connect it, I know I had asked for a specific manager's section on your agenda, so each month, is there any way that you can include that? And through, I'd say, maybe not this month, but next month, you can just update on the grant. And not only that, but equal to time, right?
Do we have any more questions for Mr. Stone, on this presentation?
Uh, my recommendation is to name the circuit, so you're saying in a nutshell, if we do that, it's going to help us get out of debt, or can you explain to us?
Sure thing, but these rates that I'm recommending, if you hold the line on your expense growth, should allow you to make enough money to pay your operations and pay this new debt service, and any existing debt service. I'd save a little bit of money like that every year for emergencies. If you had another big project come up and you had to borrow a lot of money, you'd be the biggest, the best grant candidate ever. Because I think you can demonstrate now, with your ratepayers, that these rate recommendations would be coming to your table and paying, chair of a meeting, household in front of us. On the average, but there's not a whole lot of wind to go up. So that, these rates that I'm recommending will allow you to make the money, but if you've paid the money, you've already borrowed. If you sign to build the USDA, they look to your tax base, more water and sewer rates. So, the other option is raise taxes. I think it's better to get it for water and sewer, because that way the people who use more water and sewer pay more. And that, that thing, whereas property values, how, or like, how much water is destroyed for sewer contracts, sewer contracts.
I know that it's no secret, that we can handle some challenges, that we can, that's no secret, and I know that we have to address those. I'm just, but we just said, you said, if we get on board with the rates that you recommend, and you look at the headquarters of the, the green line. Is that right, you say?
And I think we'll see where the construction of the middle is part of the improvement, since saving some of the people are 40. We'll be much more efficient in the work.
Come on, thank you, glad to be a service. I'll be glad to come back and listen to your presentation and your old friends and stuff.
Oh, I have one more question, so you will be the same person?
Sure thing.
Pretty mad and all that?
Yes.
Item number, is it the, all the, special appropriate action purposes, you're doing two-way rate analysis, just presenting, or is it just a special purpose?
It's a motion to, to.
Well, the two rates, not, you have to, not the rate, just the presentation, correct?
Glad to come back with a grab for the. Say that, come upon next time, what's wrong with that?
So we can have that.
And that would be the appropriate answer.
Well, it's meeting, discussion purposes only, item number eight, we'll go to item number nine, discussion on appropriate actions to a true resolution of our partnership. Authority submission of an application to the Department of County and Community Affairs, TP, HCA, Home Program Assistance, Ms. Donna Johnson. And I know Donna's not here, but we have another one presented.
There's not, not there this evening. We did have MSFA call in from Grant Works. That's the firm that will be looking into the application. And it's for five units.
Try to surface five.
I'm sorry?
It's going to be, try to surface five units this time, Mark?
It should be, um, this is an actual set amount that we've had, you know, before you get in the reservation program. And this time it is a set amount for four hundred thousand dollars, and it will do four houses. Plus pay for all the administrative costs that associated in general, like, general, um, contract.
Um, the council just pointed out on section four of the resolution, there's an amount of forty thousand. But it's a little much in the past that we would do that with in-kind services.
This is, no, this is completely different. This is basically saying that if the state was to just say, we don't have any money anymore, that you would only be obligated to pay forty thousand dollars toward any of the contractors. We've been doing, Grant Works has been doing this kind of work for thirty years plus, and have never had a city ever have to pay anything. This is just saying that you have forty thousand dollars in the bank. Yeah, you do. And if, if there was a demand as from a contractor that you would have to pay that, in the contracts that they get, they get when they build a house, it says that they can't do that. So that's kind of just being there. It's a point factor for scoring, if you have it, so that y'all make about more points.
Who do people apply to?
Don, a team, a team will come here, and we take applications here in, at his house. And from any of these, that come right here.
This is a whole, this is, this service is for four, which is definitely free to the customer.
What this program does is it will actually come in, owner occupied home. So a homeowner can come in, apply for it, they must have a clear title, taxes be paid. Um, there's a list like this that they have to meet all of these different qualifications according to the state. They will actually tear down the house on that piece of property and rebuild it on their own, that piece of property that they have. So it's, it's completely different, like, than developer, this is not really development. It's just replacing substandard.
Yeah, we've done that.
You've done it, so.
Motion to approve by Councilwoman Gill, seconded by Councilwoman Miller. All in favor of the case by three nine?
Aye.
All opposed, same sign? No motion is good. Thank you, ma'am. We go to item number ten, discussion on appropriate action to approve city crazy those brains tax rate for fiscal year twenty sixteen, forty seventeen. Where is all the?
Hello.
Hi.
Twenty sixteen, certified balance for the city crazy experience was a hundred and ninety-four million, two hundred and thirty-six thousand, six hundred and thirty-nine. That was a loss of about two million dollars from last year. So with the calculations based from the, uh, they control the office, effective rate is point sixty-three twenty-one. And the rollback tax rate is one point sixteen.
And that would equals to where we wouldn't have to go to, um?
Probably three? Yes, your effective rate at point sixty-three twenty-one will keep you from doing something.
Is this, is this a recognition would be with your effective tax rate of point sixty-three twenty-one? Or you, I believe, needs to be out instead of the same or sixty? But it's a different contract. The lower half is.
Uh, one point sixteen.
So that's the difference.
How much is the difference?
The difference on, um, you lost two million dollars in the equation. So if you go, you can, um, adopt the effective tax rate at point sixty-three twenty-one, and you'll get a little bit more money versus last year. Or keep it in, like you have it now, which is present.
Are, are. I thought I was going to ask you.
This is basically six, this is because we have the.
Your conference.
Yes.
So it's the same.
Yes, the same.
So you can just prove the, the recommended rate, right?
Yes, you can prove the rate that is consistent with revenue that's indicated in the budget.
Or. Six cents, or you can go with the effective rate of point sixty-three twenty-one.
And the effective rate still will make us go into public areas, right?
Right.
It will be generating about the same level of revenue as we did last year of the deal.
Anybody going up?
The hospital is going up. So they're going from six cents. County, the state, but eventually it's either six or nine cents. So what, going up, um, forty cents to either forty-six or forty-nine? Although there it goes a lot higher. With the calculations, but it don't necessarily go up. Values drop, all plus important. So whenever your values go down, the tax rate's going to have to go up.
At least it downs out.
Yes.
So it will be okay with it?
Right, we're not perfect.
Another question?
So. Yeah, we're thirty, fifty-three dollars.
That's what I'm imagining, that the effective rate will be just for us?
For sixty. Thirty cents. Thirty cents. Thirty cents.
Yeah, three cents.
Right. And you'll still generate about one point one million in revenue.
That's a hundred percent collection.
Exactly, and that's at ninety-five percent collection. Ninety-five percent. Uh, it's, um, one, one million, one hundred and sixty-six thousand, three seventy-nine. Sixty-eight, if you go with the effective.
And this one?
And that's at ninety-five.
Well, that's ninety-five?
That's at ninety-five. You say that the sixty cents, it'll be a million, one oh seven, one four seven point three.
So are you recommending this bracket?
Yes, ma'am. With the new debt service requirements.
And this goes into effect of the corporate branch. Do we have any more questions? Do we need a motion? Do we check over? Motion to approve.
Tax rate, this for your assistance.
Seconded by Councilwoman Johnson. All in favor of the case by three nine?
Aye.
All opposed, same sign? Motion is good. Thank you. You still have to come back, right?
Yes, I believe we set up for September sixth to double time.
Thank you. Thank you. We go to item number eleven, discussion on appropriate action to approve engagement letter with Garza Gonzalez and Associates to approve city crazy friends first year ending twenty sixteen, and a financial support board. Mr. Val.
Yes, Mayor, council members, you have a copy of an engagement letter that this is made by Capes and Associates and Associates. There were our audit terms as pass this for mayor, or applied in the case that we need. The engagement letter that they submitted includes anticipated work of about four hundred and ten hours to complete the audit process. Uh, this year we budgeted sixty-eight thousand two hundred, or last year we budgeted sixty-eight thousand, uh, two hundred and seventy-five dollars to complete the audit process. This year, we budgeted the same amount. However, because we've done some work with ENCODE, uh, the auditor will have to give less work than he did last year. And so we about that the auditor's quoted for, for this project is forty-seven thousand, one hundred and fifty dollars, uh, which is the savings from the sixty-eight thousand, two hundred and seventy-five dollars of work done in the first year. As if you did put into the project. It was more than four million.
Did we go out for this for this one, or is this just submitted to you?
This is an extension of the contract.
Okay, existing?
Yes, the state statute allows up to a five-year contract. And so, uh, I'm firm to say this. Uh, this is a professional service, and so contract extensions are permitted. This auditor also has had the experience by being here last year of having gone through the audit process, and it's unbelievable to have. And it's, uh, in my opinion, less expensive to have them come in and have someone new come in and start basically the process. Where they're up to the, what's there, and where it actually takes longer to complete it.
So there is not, by law, so many years extension? It seems to me after a while, you have to put this up for public visits.
Well, no, not for a professional services contract. And we'll get into the bank deposit area during the city management, because that is a five-year project.
Is that the contract for service?
The contract for service, exactly. And this is a professional service, and the auditor came in last year. And so extending the auditor's, uh, allowing the contractor, the same contractor that came in last year, to come in and do a work this year is acceptable in the, um, professional experience. Professional services, pure means standing.
So then after we get fully into ENCODE, it might even go down more?
It might even go down more.
I still think we need, we need to kind of see what's up there, and see if this is really a good price.
I think, uh, I think in another, in another year, we'll be able to, or it might take less. But since we're not completing the, uh, project yet, we still have the building thing to be done, and we just finished up the payroll portion. There's some things the auditor may have to do, and he's aware because he's been here, and that's why he's still working on it.
So when you say that ENCODEs, if you look to ENCODE, ENCODE is a program, a system that will help us update our processes, generate reports in a more efficient way, which then, what I recall is that it would help, it helped us save a stock decision. Because once you have all the program, we call it in, in the budget process, we'll discuss that. And when it is first came to us, that will eliminate a decision. But it has helped us done that, and now it's helping us reduce some of the cost of auditors. So in the long run, ENCODE would benefit though.
Yes.
Like, are you?
And it was, it was this auditor, by the way, I think recommended to the city council, that the city council, ENCODE, can.
And the reason that I share that with you is I recall about it in an app store. So I know that when they first came to ENCODE, uh, ENCODE, the system, uh, they're, they're looking especially, they could go that route. But we did go that route. And I'm saying, I guess the discussion with these council, that they don't go that route. And if you decide to go that route, in the long run, it's going to save us a thing.
Yes, it is.
It's a better way.
And they will go.
That's smart.
Exactly, and with the recent reduction in tours, uh, with financial issues, it allows to pass down a bit less manual. Therefore, that actually allowed us to be able to either take a reduction in tours and certainly look at, look at the future.
But yet, you generate maybe more accurate than quote two.
Exactly, because there's not, there's not as much manual inputting as you would maybe favor. It's, uh, it's in the system.
So is this a contract we're approving, or it's just a?
It's an, it's an engagement letter. It will allow Capes and Associates to conduct the city's fiscal year ending, uh, in the suspect.
How many of you have more than nine?
I think motion of ENCODE being taken.
Motion to have any by Councilwoman Waters, go ahead with her.
Aye.
Motion to have by Councilwoman Porter? All in favor of the case by three nine?
Aye.
All opposed, same sign? No motion is good. We go to item number twelve, discussion on appropriate action to approve resolution number five oh seven, a resolution to waive water and trash collection fees for the Russellville, Donda, Gori.
I remember the council, there was a resolution in the package, so a request was made, uh, by the council meeting, to have the city consider reducing, uh, water fees for this event, uh, which is being managed by.
Comptel, what is?
The city, yes. Have representative county attorneys. Uh, the city attorney, uh, prepared a resume response to their request, uh, that would allow, uh, the waiver of the first three gallons, three thousand gallons of water. Uh, three thousand gallons is just a new, and, uh, and looking back at the, uh, the, uh, oil history for that particular site, that's about what they use, they use less than, they drill for the minimum, so they don't use a whole lot of water. It's mostly for specialty events, and, uh, and they really don't, uh, it's, it's recreational, park use, public use. Uh, but it's not used that heavily for everyday use. The county constructed two pavilions on the side. And, uh, they do get some use, but they don't require the consumption of water. And, uh, so the resolution again, this perplexes the, uh, waiver of the first three thousand gallons, which is. They never use three thousand gallons.
And the garbage.
The garbage as well, and they don't need garbage pickup at that location. And they do, they handle it through the county, I believe, they have an event, garbage pickup, the county comes in and assists with that.
Yes, they do. Or sometimes the people that hold the event, they clean up.
I'm sure Yoniaga stated that, you know, they, they go. They, they assist, uh, I believe the, uh, the company there has a fifty-year lease agreement with the county, so it's the county that actually, uh, has the property.
Owns it.
Owns the property.
And they need electricity.
They do, they need electricity, yes.
Electricity's on the timer?
Yes, and there's, uh, two lights, you know, big lights on the property. So they keep that neighborhood well yet, and the county's coming.
I don't have a problem with the resolution, but my question is, does it go, it's in a formal resolution, should it be in ordinance?
I think, I think, yeah, just wish it could suffice. It's setting policy.
Do you have any more questions? I'm sorry, resolution number 507.
I think motion to approve resolution number 507.
Motion that we make our counsel in question, I consider my counsel in Johnson, all this. All favor to Kate by saying nine.
Aye.
All opposed same sign. We go to item number 13, discussion on appropriate action regarding interlocal law enforcement cooperation agreement with the Dimmitt County Sheriff's Department and the city of Prezus Springs Sheriff Marion Boy.
For the sheriff, sheriffs injured, back in the community. I believe on July 21st, the last meeting, was brought in for discussion on the amount, and we put in an local agreement, which I think they have before you.
This is, this is the same, it's set in the past, and the only difference is that the course of term has changed. And the actual payment of $200,000 was made payable in three installments. The first installment, for $100,000, will begin the end of December of this year. This will allow us to begin to generate the revenue necessary to submit the payment. The old contract, called a quarter of payments. So they make the first payment, we make the first payment, the end of December, over half of the amount, and then, for the balance of the year, which ends June 30th, we make two quarters of payments. In addition to that, there was some discussion about transferring to Tahoe Police Package Vehicle to the sheriff's office. And so, there've been numbers for those Tahoe that are described in the, in the agreement. It's been on the novel, who's familiar with last year's agreement, he's familiar with this.
Do you want to move to the second?
Yes. Basically, under whole force, when they're not state law, if they're part of the agreement, we can, of course, we can.
So I think she's, yeah, that could be a limitation. So it says here, the city, quite, quite, very serious.
With the charter.
I wish for a charter, in case some of them are not permitted with a charter.
You're talking about your deputies?
No, deputies, they're not permitted with a, I'm not permitted with a charter, actually, I'm more than straight to them.
Do you think that you need to point out for us?
No, everything the same, it's just, as you said, was the amount, the two weeks, it's still a year, from July 16th to June 30th. And there may be sheriff's board office, they may order you to update the amount of calls, citations, you may need to do presentation off of that.
Do you recommend agreement? Yeah.
Yes, I do.
Do you have any more questions? Do you have any questions? Do you have a question?
I'm glad you have the, the local agreement, uh, with, I'm not sure.
Do you have to do my counsel in my words? I guess there's a council in the middle. All favor to Kate by saying nine.
Aye.
All opposed same sign. Motion is carried. Thank you.
I'd like to thank you for working with us.
Let me be honest, I appreciate it.
Then what do we need to do here?
Thank you.
We go to item number 14, discussion on appropriate action to approve fresh pickup, interlocal agreement between Dimmitt County and the city of Prezus Springs. Let's check it out.
Mayor members of the council, if you're concerned with the county.
Yes, very good. Good afternoon, council. And I was basically deep on there, saying that the first pickup and the equipment would be the same as the interlocal agreement. There's something to that.
Is this the one that we already have, the precinct one?
Yes, it is, and city attorneys reviewed this, and there was really no fiscal lens act, there's just county helps us, and we help the county, and it's all in, it's just.
Right, right.
What are tipping fees?
Those are landfill fees that.
Tipping is landfill?
Exactly.
Tipping, is that?
That's right.
This, this is gonna apply to all county precincts, under precinct one, as previous before, or what causes?
Uh, this applies to our, our precinct.
Comité.
If there would be the precinct inside the precinct?
Yes, because we don't do outside.
What is the inside?
Just inside the precinct, yes.
I'm gonna say to your London section, for a warning. City.
Do we have any questions on this vote? All this confirmed. Do you need a motion to your turn over to my area of question?
On section 1.01, it has a repairing streets, or have recent health, new streets.
Well, it already helped us.
It did.
We actually give the county, for law on asphalt operations, and that provides, the last two of the state.
So it allows providing asphalt for us.
That provided us with asphalt, and they provided us with, kind of stored, and it gets sand from the street, so we'll have a tutorial.
Any further discussion? Questions? Do we need a motion? Your turn, your.
I believe you're trying to, uh, cooperate.
Motion that, do you have my counsel in Johnson, do I have a second?
Second.
Second, if I counsel in question. All favor to Kate by saying nine.
Aye.
All opposed same sign.
I do have a question, it's okay, it's a, it's. On the first, 1.01, first pickup on DC, maybe based by the county, is the county must serve days?
Yes.
For each precinct or not separate precincts?
Yeah. For precincts that have certain days, not exactly what days or what.
No construction material, this is all a question. No construction material?
Just home, that wasn't a question.
Motion that be with my counsel in Johnson, second, if I counsel in question, all the favor to Kate by saying nine.
Aye.
All opposed same sign. Motion is carried. We'll go to item number 15, discussion on appropriate action to approve, continue with the emergency medical service contract between Dimmitt County and the city of Prezus Springs. We have item A, interlocal agreement, emergency medical service, and B, bids for emergency medical service provider.
Mayor, this is council, if you had in your package, the time of then, is there a draft in there? The county's currently accepting bids for?
Yes. Um, currently, we have plenty of bids, and we were able to get two that responded. We have the Met Shield ambulance service, that came in at 22, $240,000 per year, that would make, um, the county pay 120,000, and the city would pay 120,000. Uh, the other one that came in was, uh, Aspen Medical USA Inc., came in at 300,000, that would, that would make the county pay 150,000, and the city pay 150,000. The only, we have Camino Real, and, uh, given there is, the county pays 87, 87,500, and the city pays 87,500.
They didn't see that, did they?
They did not. Now, I don't know if y'all would like for, for us to re-submit, advertise for re-submission of bids, and maybe let it, you know. Or the county say. Pretty much, it comes to where y'all, you want to do it this way. If you want to, like, use the burdens you took through now, or can you submit?
No, you can resubmit.
Are you sure that Camino Real is not interested in this?
I'm not sure, it's just.
Okay, I'll put my guy out before we get. Who else? Do we have experience with these other things?
I'm not sure.
I mean, has, has the county, has the government?
I'm not sure, I'm actually new to the, to the town, so I'm not sure. But I can find out.
Probably put it a bit, but we need, we need to find out what kind of services we provide, and also, you know, or, or cities, or. Or any of, right.
So any chance I could make a comment on this?
Can you answer?
Can I push it? We're looking for, 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 for. Back on January 22nd, I've written a request about, well, yeah. Back on January 22nd, I'll add, should pass. Because I had to talk to you and us, which was part of the, one, two, three, four, five, six, seven minutes to get there. I was just, I can't tell, too, I spoke to him. Once they did, they gave me the, the, what I was saying, for everything, but, girl, I was appreciating what I played, I was saying, to me, that was, 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 pushed that. I was just, I, I would think, given the 50,000 dollars, you know, for search, you're, you're going to expect something. That wasn't part of your fourth, fourth, on a next. Since they're not, I've tried, I've been in, since we're coming to it, I've tried calling six times, uh, they always tell me to return the call, didn't stop back morning, call, and go back to the anyway. Seems like you're, that's just me, care. I hope they got, and, and, probably, but, in my opinion.
There are representatives of both companies. So then. The, the current, the current contract is actually three years. And, uh, the, under the term agreement with section 21 of the current contract, it ends, and actually resolves for 20 seconds.
So why did the county go out for this?
I have, you, we were not advised by, there was an issue in here.
So that contract is with them and them?
That's correct.
So won't you know why is there? If, I, to my knowledge, I believe it expires next month.
Expires August 15th. Expires August 15th of this year, yes. In a couple of weeks.
So unless there was an amendment to the contract.
I've got the contract, uh. It was signed August 26th of 2013, for three years.
If you look in the, the contract, they have the date wrong. I got the contract date, like, from Mr. Quinter, and it's like in the date, it's supposed to be 2016, and I have 2016.
Dates are wrong.
For the 2017, it should be 2016.
The contract that I got, I got from the records at the courthouse, and it was signed August 26th, 2013, for three years, and it expires on August 15th of this year.
I'll have to take that, for the research.
I think so.
Having a motion? There, that'll be tabled.
Can I say something, record, please? Uh, please don't consider Camino Real. Just recently, uh, they've done a lot of things. There was an incident where they basically had, uh, somebody wait for an hour while they were bickering back and forth to get that person to the hospital. Once they decided that somebody was gonna cause a mental health and mental retardation, they did, they took him over there, and then from there, they took him to San Antonio, because he was that bad. You know, Camino Real, I've got a lot of documentation where they take 20, 25 minutes to get somewhere. It took them 21 minutes to get from where they're at on, um, by Chesapeake, all the way to South 13th. 21 minutes. And that's unsat.
Well, by us tabling doesn't mean either way, we're tabling the item because obviously, there's discrepancy on our end, and so, we want to make sure things cleared up before we take these actions either way. That is the reason behind the tabling.
Okay, because I was, I was basically asking Mr. Johnson not to consider asking them to, you know, file in, and they said they weren't gonna bid for it at the county commissioners meeting, and there was only two bids submitted.
Which is fine, but at this point in time, we need to clear up our end, because, I mean, discoveries have been made, we're, we're, we're dollars and it's close.
City attorney would need a little bit of this.
Motion to table, my counsel in my words, do I have a second? Do you have my counsel in question? All favor to Kate by saying nine.
Aye.
All opposed same sign. Do I have, do we send by, if it's bold, the dates coming back, could it be on the, the? We move item number 16, discussion on appropriate action to approve street closure on North 7th Street between Alamo and East of Boston, First United, Muffin's Court.
So, board number nine, I'm the price, I'm a newly attached contractor, so I'm working with the, with the. We have a huge termite problem, we have to tear the brick off the building, replace the wood structure underneath, and redo the brick. Right now, we're on the east side of the building, these guys have to have a place to park their dump trailer, uh, both bricks, and also for the, for women. They're apparently on the east side, and also on the south side. On the south side, they had to shore up the building, it was fairly long, two by four, to extend probably about 20, half the building. I noticed that on, uh, 7th Street, vehicles parked there for the school, and I would want to park my vehicle there, while this brick is, work is going on.
Park there, we do.
I apologize for that, but there's gonna be a lot of dust, and for the next 10 weeks.
That's what I was about to ask you, is there a timeframe?
Yes, uh, they started off with a 12-week timeframe, they've been at it for two weeks, so anywhere from eight to 10 weeks. And depending on the condition of the building on that side, the termite damage goes up around eight feet, if they, they, they can just get by with the bottom eight feet, we'll get them a lot quicker, a lot, a lot less. So I'm, I'm just asking, because these guys are gonna need room to work, and there's gonna be a lot of debris falling over, and kind of what you had. And if we can't close out the entire street, so we tone off half the street, so they can park their trailers, that's pretty much for it.
Thank you. Um, I guess my question would be, would it be just eight to five? You want closure, or you need it all day, all-day closure?
It would be all day.
So you're asking to close right in front of, and off that 7th Street?
7th Street between, between local and the.
You want closure or you need it all day, all day closure?
It would be all day.
So, you're asking to close right in front of, and off that Seventh Street?
Seventh Street between, between Maple and Animal Street.
Was that just like that?
Ask the question, please. So, the closing, would it be just like this is in the street or like this?
No, it would be Seventh Street, uh, Maple and Animal Street.
So, in Apple and Animal, so this section here, the little this school over here. So, we all park right here, right? So, from here to here, from all of this.
And is more parking available in the third parking lot?
Yes, there is, and we're very thankful that y'all let us park there. Thank you so much. So, then this whole street would be gone?
Yes. So, we're saying that the whole street, when we just like, yeah, let's go on that, let's go ahead and park their, their, they have a dump trailer. Little bit of old brick and what have you, and parking a college and correct. Today, we'll be staging a college and correct.
Yes, you would. Because if you're gonna have those daring people. And not only that, you're gonna have, which I'm thinking, yes. I agree with you. But we'd have to be very careful when we look because this is where our, our visitors are, meets, I don't know, home, busy voice. And I'm thinking of our guests and our handicapped. If it, you know what I'm saying, they park right there. Could it be like?
Well. Yeah, they're sure to be over here that they care.
Yes. So, you see, okay, that, that's what I'm asking, you can block this way. That way, they could still have, yes, that's all that.
But how would affect your, your parents dropping off because that's the one way.
Right, that's the one way.
Well, they would have to go this way.
During school, yeah.
During school, that's gonna have to block, I mean, I know. Just for everybody's safety and, you know, somebody's vehicles get damaged, and these guys are gonna do a good jack man up on her pad and all of them.
Take them to school down.
Do you have a problem?
No, we don't need this, but we would have that saved.
Yeah.
Everybody's good with it.
You can, I would need a motion to either approve or deny his request of ride on number sixteen.
I get a motion, we have approved, I think sixteen, the closure of, uh, North Seventh Street. This is gonna happen.
Nothing has been made by Councilwoman, hold on a second, I can tell by Councilwoman Little. All opposed, indicate by saying nine. All opposed, same thing.
You don't see, like, we're taking, moving?
Well, yeah, they could do.
The barricades. They moved it to horses. I thought it was gonna be like official, you know how the tiny block there?
Right, these guys just started about nine o'clock in the morning, you're all parked out there already, you don't.
Yeah.
The gate or something?
Actually, gate and a gate or something, company could do it.
Right, okay, I'll talk to them tomorrow morning. I gotta come in this house.
In very construction.
Yes. Those calls are not gonna be.
Hold on, I need a vote, yeah, hold on. Motion has been made by Councilwoman, hold on a second, just by Councilwoman Little. All opposed, indicate by saying nine. All opposed, same thing. Motion is carried, there is your vote, sir.
Thank you.
Thank you. We go to item number seventeen, discussion on our production here through H O T funds request to sponsor the fourteenth annual water garden independent vacuum sewer rally held by Mr. Johnson.
Hi. We're just here again to see if you would be very kind to us and help us with our. Thank you. Again, I just think I'd like to remind everybody, it's not about us. It's about kids. It's about boys, no. And. You guys, this event, um.
It's very organized.
Somebody asked me about how many people stay in hotels and whatnot, and we can't predict. Can't say what, fifteen, twenty-five, a hundred. People that come to the same place. Both, everybody comes. But most of them, anyway, just have to pass up in the year. They're coming with bikes and the best thing about the weather is nobody can predict the weather, the brings, what is gonna show up. Because it's a bike, that's not a good thing, it's a bike thing. So, just being okay to do, be kind of help us out a bit. And help us keep going without the case.
We appreciate what you do. Uh, this is kind of a big process for us too, these hotel clubs are restricted. The purpose of the funds is to bring people to local hotels. You know, on the first line of the brochure, they give it as heads in the beds. Uh, so, with, with no record of past years, you know, knowledge of what, what people do, it's, it's harder to do. Going forward, that would be something that we consider. What we learned from this year, we'll apply to future years. As, as far as, but if it's something that's gonna bring people to free springs, to stay in hotels and spend money. Raise, raise money for toy program. I would add, uh. One, another thing that I would suggest is, uh. Do you have any funding sources precise?
We get sponsors every year, we try to get sponsors, but every year it's. We try to get as many as we can.
But I didn't see any of that on, on the application.
The application that you had, you had zero, that was our.
Up and down was, um, I understood, um, have we asked anybody else for this year? And no, I haven't asked anybody here, we're getting it.
But he was saying it's possible for last year.
Last year, alright. Okay, alright. Uh, in. Somewhere in the application, it asks who else is, is funding the project and that would, that would be right. So, in the future or in your post report, it would be, it would be, uh. Good to put down, not only the city, but all of these other people and nonprofits and companies. Give their money for this, and that makes it a more powerful project. So, uh, that's, that's the main thing that I had to put down.
What Mr. Johnson said, this is new and it, we're going on the tax law. Only certain things can go towards this, from what we, um. Like the music, that, you know, that, that's in the, uh, the arts, that comes in there in some of the promotion. But like on one year, on your solicitor advertising, solicitation, all that, you put twenty-two hundred, but yet you show.
Advertising, does that include the shirts as well, the advertising and that was?
Unfortunately, that doesn't count towards news brand, the Uvalde year, things like that, they're advertising. And then on promotion of the arts, uh, you put thirty coming through the second, the music. That's probably there. Um, you went to Super S negotiating today?
Yes, Super.
Super, I'm sorry. Did you get this?
Um, do you have anything to? No, we don't have this figured in. I can get something. I have a question. I know that this is a new process and the contract is filed with the law. And, uh, we should come after all. Uh, but the application, we have some application and working, so when, when's the deadline? So, if I forget your stuff. On the first look. Okay, with that said, has a, uh, is there a list about where you're gonna come? Besides the ones here? That might as well have a special meeting, I, I don't know. But. But then we, we tell them. But.
Get all of the names by August thirty first.
And because we're not gonna have another meeting.
Yeah, we'll, we'll be.
We are having another meeting?
Depending on when we're gonna have to.
For that, or, or is it the regular meeting?
We'll have to.
We'll have to. We have to. I mean, I'm just asking, is this new to us?
This could be included, uh.
Not there in other.
But all of it could be included on a date of the special meeting. We do need a whole special meeting, considering the fact that it was a court. Which is ours, all of us. So, is the deadline is August thirty first and we will, we could not necessarily have a special meeting, but we could have the next year, which will be the same.
Right.
Well, we have all the, like, everybody's. This is their, uh, this is thirty first.
Is he wanting that?
Yeah.
I'm just asking, is there another list that they didn't make this deadline for this meeting? That's what I'm asking, I'm not gonna ask them, I'm just asking, were there more, uh, requests after the deadline for this one? Not right now, so it's evident that we're gonna have another meeting because I'm, the deadline's on. Let me, is that what I meant? Okay, so we will have other.
Well, it's not the same if there's only one application and yet we have, yeah, so.
Do you see what I'm saying? What happens to all the people that used to? What happens to all the people, and if this is the only one, is there a list, we're gonna have to use that, even if it's in September, but still, but they, they make the deadline. Of August.
See, we did it this early because, um, here.
Yeah, you're, you're correct. I saw it. I saw it. I saw it. Yeah, she said. I'm telling you, you are absolutely one hundred percent, I saw it. It's ready for you. It says, all funds request should be submitted on a official application by July thirty first, two thousand seventeen.
Now, what, what, what the council had talked about doing was, uh, next funding cycle. And there's a headline in the Earth that has, is have everybody make presentations at the same time. So, for this year, because we were transitioning, but July thirty first deadline, I guess.
It should have been August thirty first for this year, we extended it for this year because it was the new process. And that is on our nose, and go look at our draft. But why is it on here on this?
How corrected? George, did you?
Excuse me?
How corrected?
It's good, but it's not here.
Well, no, I thought it was.
But you have been out an hour.
No, it's not corrected, it's mine.
On yours, but not an hour.
Okay, so we have the item one of the, that we need to take over. We need to, obviously, they did what they have to do. They brought in the, it's a, it's a motion.
I'm concerned that to me, the music counts, it's part of the, not, not everything counts. Music does fall under there. And it's not the advertising that's falling.
So, is our just question to, you know, if people come on down or if they, they.
Your question was about the t-shirts, if they don't qualify?
The, you know, the advertising. It would.
If they're gonna sell the t-shirts, you can.
As, as the t-shirt.
Consider it part of the.
So, it's gonna have some direct impact on tourism. Advertising, solicitations, promotion that directly promotes tourism and, uh, etc. I, I think that it's in safe to say all of this is.
But some of it does count.
But some of it does, I mean, that counts, that counts. This counts, this counts. The light doesn't have time, it's considered that.
I would say it falls within the spirit of chapter three. Fifty-one of the tax code. Check. The request was, does this. One of the problems we're discussing is it falls in chapter three fifty-one of the Texas tax code, which states the use of hot funds is only limited to certain activities, including advertising, solicitation of promotion that directly promotes tourism and, uh, etc. I, I think that it's in safe to say all of this is.
Will the flag say city agrees with them?
It always says, the name is.
Yes.
Okay, so let me ask, so how does it, how does it say city agrees with Springs or, um, Rock, Rock, you know, where's it from, Rock, where's it from? Currys, in Currys Springs or city of? Well, we, cuz that's, see, that's the main determining factor right there, because if you're just putting Currys and Springs, well, it's in Currys and Springs, if you're putting city of, which is Springs, you're promoting the city of. You see the, the difference right?
So, we should do that.
Okay, so let me ask, so how does it, how does it say city of Crizal Springs or, um, Rock, Rowley, or is it for the toy factory? Crizal, in Crizal Springs or city of? Well, we, because that's, see, that's the main determining factor right there. Because if you're just putting Crizal Springs, well, it's in Crizal Springs. If you're putting city of Crizal Springs, you're promoting the city of. You see the, the difference right?
So we should do that.
And that the city of Crizal Springs is prominent as a sponsor.
Yes.
And I'm sorry for the, you know, but it's kind of, well.
You're our first one.
Yeah, you're our first one, but we're trying to get this process to where, I mean, there was issues that if you can or you can't. So we're trying to do everything that we are able to fight along. I mean, because anybody could come up there, I need twenty thousand dollars, I'm gonna have a festival. Hold on there, you know? So we're trying to do this step by step, just, I mean, don't think of it really, but this is our experience for us too.
You are first one here.
Yeah. Yeah, yeah, you are those. But please bear with us, we're just trying to make sure we have all our.
You could do a motion by then, you could do a motion to authorize thirty-eight hundred dollars for the promotion of the arts that directly enhance tourism. And then twenty-two hundred dollars for the advertising of Crizal Springs under the proviso that the city of Crizal Springs is prominently displayed as a sponsor on any item, but that twenty-two hundred dollars is. So it covers all the stages.
Yeah, because like I said, there is a big, you know, saying the city of, or just, I mean, Crizal.
So, you know, also the, uh, the post report. And we'll need all the, the, in, in, at that point.
Right.
The reports are thirty days, thirty days.
Can you see?
Yes, ma'am. I noticed that you put your primary location for the event or project at the city veterans park. But you're charging a fee.
We have to.
Our price is around forty-five.
He's a fourteen, four and fourteen.
On your vendors or your?
I, well, actually, we need to find another one.
And then for years.
It's a rally. I have to tell you, wondering, you know.
I understand that, it's just, I've never seen that before, so I'm questioning.
You can't, we can expand without any wonder.
So the veterans, you can't do this on, any type of, like, sales can't have. That's not the. Yeah, you can't make it. I mean, there's times where, all right, I'll give you a, we have our lighting, we have bigger.
What about students?
But the. We even have that, none of that residency inside the city. You see? They're having the event and, like, they're, we're not charging them to have the event. And they're making the residents, they're not giving the city a resident. You see the?
Yeah. Well, it gets you through.
I think that we could have, uh, review the application, the application. Let's make sure that they need certain, like, not just the individual, that it's reviewed, you just put it on. And that way, uh, it helps the question, it helps the city. And I mean.
Council feel more comfortable tabling any calls and things like that.
Well, you know, are we gonna be tabling every request or not?
Well, I think, I think, uh, we just gotta be issue, as many to drive changes. It has to do with, what, what, say, fifty-five years. This is something for, from the go on fourteen years, for itself to speed.
See, this is actually.
Ah, but no, no, but the issue now is just charging, charging education to go to, 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 to. Which we've always done until today. That's, that's a relevant.
So, 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 you're gonna charge.
Oh, that's different. We have that sound last year, a meeting like this, where they, for thirty now, get away. Well, I, I'm not, not with you right now. But you, but you keep talking serious. Can you bring that just? Because it, it. And let me, if my point also compared me in my wrong, I'm just saying, I did not know of that. But if they have brought this to us, for thirteen, fourteen years.
I beg your pardon, ma'am.
Uh, they're saying that they've done this for years. So if they've brought this request for years to the council, often someone said, I cannot know.
They've never been.
Well, that's, that's.
I didn't know. That's your, it's the first time.
The city has ever.
Okay, and it was approved. Okay, bring that to us.
Question for you, when, uh, when the Fourth of July festival was held at the county property, were there fees charged for that?
Not any entry fees.
Well, these are actually entry fees. I mean, is, is for the bikers to.
It's for the bikers to prepare the show and all.
But the people.
The people don't pay.
It's just the.
They don't have to, yeah, it's just the biker's pay.
Because it's the bike thing, so, I think the right front is toys and.
The whole point is.
So anybody in the community could walk in, walk in.
And they could actually have as a toy. So it doesn't have to be, uh, she takes it. It doesn't have to be.
Just dress for the shit.
Yeah.
They're not charging you.
You know, maybe it's just supposed to be an entry fee, maybe say the resident.
They donate either a toy, they can donate a toy or a.
So it's not necessarily you're gonna get money from.
From everybody, no.
It's not an entry fee, so not everything.
The bikers, the bikers are on the, to raise money. There's some bikers that bring toys. And they have bags and they, and there are bikers that don't wanna carry toys, but they're in the bikes. So they pay for two months, uh, the price of.
I got some changing things too, like, for this, they don't, they wouldn't charge me and you to go see.
Not right.
And I get that.
Against, against, you follow the.
But I know you would charge.
Yeah, but, yeah, well, that's what it is, yeah. All right, it's a registration fee, that's what it is.
And then it's an event open to a public.
Yeah. And they thought, and wasn't that combined?
Yes, that was combined.
That was, as long as you're not charging the people going to see.
Oh, no, we never. And I can see why she would ask that, that's why I'm asking for the last years, just so we can compare. Okay, so maybe incorrect.
So take your toy.
You too.
I, I have. All right. Okay, so, is there any questions or any more concerns before we make a motion? You need to pull the line? The market question, line of seventeen? So we need a motion? Pull it or deny?
Well, I guess I do have a question. Daniel, uh, with, with mayor, um, entertain a motion for pulling out or?
I would say, I was gonna do the two, like, the way that you referenced. Right.
What if you have a?
It's the four, it's the four.
Well, then, then we can vote it off to your, depending, she may, we may, that's the only.
Because the bottom line is that number, that bottom figure. So do you reference us to do it the way that you said earlier, or just like?
You get what I refer to, it's, it's, all right. And I would. Before that.
You're happy?
All right. I move that we're trying to, the, the, the request for the fourteen annual. We're going to argue anything by, for that. We have six thousand dollars.
You want to hand that, I think that Congressman Johnson, take a, that Congressman Johnson.
When I decide to, please just change the word.
All the favor, do you hear my say, you know?
Aye.
All the close, same sign. Motion is carried.
Thank you. Thank you for your opinion.
And go item number eighteen, discussion on appropriate action on planning and zoning recommendations on application for the Adam, Marcus, Nandine applicant. To be issued a non-conformant use period to permit an on-site residential single-family property to be used as a commercial for the use of dancing and tumbling classes. Said property is located at four one south fourteenth street. CS Avon, Avondale, lot fifteen, lot W, F two, L one and two. City of Crizal Springs, Zuma County, Texas. Right?
We have here, uh, uh. Planning and zoning recommended a five-year, non-conform.
Five years? Do you have any opposition?
We only have one. As I said, it's set up twenty-four years out. There's only one came back, and they, they risked, nobody, and they answered back. Only had two that were. I've only had one that didn't.
Okay, I'm gonna ask, were the applicants, um. Were they aware of the process, the way the planning and zoning works? As far as the recommendation and then the council gets the plan?
Yes, she was aware, but she made the application.
Okay.
And they did continue applying, uh, when she made that application, I told her, said, they're, they're seeing it to stop. She had already started before making the application. We found out, I went to order, she needed to stop. Some people planning zoning, and then come to work.
What happened?
No, apparently they came out. Uh, they, they, they did come to, first thing, this, I made contact with, like, first. I made contact with, uh, Nandine, an advisor, she needed to stop, she had been told. And I believe they did stop, I'm honest.
And the reason for them to continue was?
I don't know, what did, what did they do?
Well, it's just, they're already down to, I mean, I don't want to be. So I should, I should. But you were on the, prior to, okay, prior to, prior to, and then you went to tell me. But once he told me to stop. And then we already started the process. But the law, the law, I mean, I, I, you know me, and the law, the law. So, I need to stop and visit with whoever, with the parents, whoever, with the customer. So you know what? We're gonna book up this process, and then we will continue, and we'll just get your, the fees and add them up. That was one way, right? To avoid now, someone coming that we didn't stop, that I can, you know? So, uh.
Good finding. I've been a professional for, for twelve years. I am a collegiate head and, head cheer and dance coach. I would attend you as the cheer and dance coach, and now I'm contracted, I'm, I recently relocated here. In our industry, it is based on who is teaching each other. And the way our business plans is we, we charge one, it is the beginning. And then it runs through the, like, the candidate, or whatever, and then it would go to the next one. We did tell our parents, or at least I did, that we were going through this issue, but I told them I would volunteer my time. And they were not willing to pay. It's different when you're running a business, where they're continuing to pay, oh, I want to pay the classes, I want this. We never, we never had a right of class. Basically, they didn't, they still had to take tuition. After they, those that chose to, they said, well, just take my tuition after you get hurt. And we have it on hold. But we have certain responsibilities now. We're going to be helping our friends, going to be giving back to the community, we're going to be helping the elderly, we're going to do fundraisers, as we can, but we have to be prepared. Just like a cheerleading team or a dance team in school. The sponsors, I believe, get us spiked in, but they spend hours of practice that we don't pay for. That's kind of what, how we've done it too. So they paid for tuition for that first month. Then we found out, I wanna say, one week, there was one week left in the month. And then we stopped, or we were planning on stopping, and I said, well, I'll still come, like, don't pay the tuition. It'll be volunteer basis until the next month, so.
Well, that, that doesn't really answer the question, pardon me for.
No, not our problem.
But the question was, well, when you found out that there was a process that had to go through the item compliance, couldn't legally operate a business.
We weren't operating a business, it was purely volunteer basis, me working with students.
No.
Yes, I'm a cheerleading parent, but I, I vote.
I think, I think you're explaining it here. People didn't pay, and then you say, oh, for this week, you're not paying for this week, but you're still operating. And that's, that's kind of having a whole place.
Um, if I made a challenge of, then they had not paid for the next one. The next one's fees were already given. So because we did not charge them those fees, we did operate free. Until we got a second phone call, they said they're gonna be citing us, and then we came, our own time, our own time.
Exactly.
And then.
But I wonder, what are the issues?
It has not yet been approved.
They, they had a balance, they, I think, I know. It's not approved by, by the, by the. Yes, but they just recommended to see. If I knew that, I'd feel like, but they recommended.
The, the, the problem is, because, don't get me wrong, given my personal opinion, I, I mean, I commend y'all for bringing something into the town that has not been brought in, right? But there's a process. So as well as you have your support, you do have people contacting, hey, these people are what, I mean, they're blocking the street. I mean, you have either four or yes, so we're like, what is going on?
Well, I mean, in, in the best interest of the city, you just follow the practices. Before even attempting to open a business to residents, you know that already, hey? Now, if there's a fire, an emergency, somebody gets hurt, who are they gonna come to? That's, we, you guys didn't have a permit, and we didn't shut you down. If something would have happened, right, that would have come to us. And, and that would have put it in a, in a bad spot. Because you, we let you operate without a permit. So, you know, let's say, let's say you let a mother create a ship's dock, because they were approved the permit, and everything else was on the lines, right?
I guess I, I'm basically, coming from a background where I didn't have issues. I had a studio open in the past. Ms. Marcus and her, Miss, Dividio, Nandine, yes, and Courtney. Uh, Ms. Nandine and I have been working together as colleagues for seven years. Her, she was a well-invented sponsor that would come and do their fair. During those businesses, during that, I had several businesses in the past. And same situation, as long as the, whoever owned that building, we were fine to work in. It wasn't due extension or, so this is the first time I've ever had issues in a, in a newer area if we only gave them willing to, to buy and use it.
Can see, we're not questioning the work, we actually recognize Ms. Marcus for her work. I mean, we recognize her in the, well, this.
Yes.
But that's not the, what we're, the issue is not the work, or what, it's the way we do it.
I, I completely understand that.
It's just like having a tour service with all these trucks next door to your house. And, oh, we need a permit, oh, uh, oh, it has to. And, and I, and I can kind of simplify, it was like, when my daughter was there, we wanted, we brought in something from the radio. We couldn't do it, nobody's home. The Episcopal church is the one who, who lets us through.
Well, that's amazing, but again, I had never had, I was kind of doing it as, I've had a business, but I don't have a choice. So if there's anyone who wants to think, because I had never had an issue in a residential area, which is why we opened before we had a permit. I was not aware, I had never had an issue before, and that's because I've been doing this for twelve years. So, again, my apologies, I was not aware of the city policies. But I have a responsibility to my kids, when you perform, send them up. I will volunteer my time. We did not take those statements on the week they were due, because we said, I, you know what, don't pay late, but if you want to come, I will be there. That was me. So, when it comes to, I understand, why didn't you stop? We're not going to perform, I'm not coming, please, swing up to something, go out there.
So, the link to the, like, the code?
We don't need that to, 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 to.
Well, even at that, too, if we get approved, look at mine, you still have to go in there and check back, and maybe not pass. So you might get another one. I'm just giving you the.
No, no, I understand, because we have so many, I mean.
No, I'm not.
But we do, because, like, if something happens, may I, they, they.
What is this, you know?
I, it should protect you.
I understand, but again, I feel like we, we're gonna have. I understand, but again, I feel like we, we're in a tough situation. Again, I've had a, it's also business, we have our exercises, we have whatever fire hazard we have, we're ready.
Yeah, but, and, and I can have my two cents worth here, let me tell you. Not about what they... I, I just, we don't need him to say that when I'm in town. We're all, we're all ready. It's, it's, it's... But please make sure everyone knows that, it's not true. And I commend you, and you know me, and I commend you. I used to be a church sponsor, and I'm a church member, so I love that, that's my passion. But, okay, I hear you say two things now. I've heard you contradict what she said, the first statement, the first statement, I may have a wrong, you know, contradict her, what she said. First, she said, you, you already got the tuition paid, right, and the kids paid, and then you said, no, because I had, I gave them a week.
No, 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 no.
And that way, okay. And the other thing that I hear you say repeatedly is that you're just in a depression, you've done this before, you're, well, then, if you have done this before, then why are you gonna go across?
Because we never had these homes before. I've never been looking for this before. But to answer your question, to clarify, we had a registration process. That is where the first tuition came from. So we had a registration process where they had paid ahead of time, and then we, the way we do it, the first, or the, the week right before the first of the month. That's when we had plans and had the second tuition due. That was the week that we had stopped. No, 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 that was the week, that, we had just been realized, and I will do it for pre-owned, it's my tuition out.
That's, that's between, that's between you and the owner. If, if I was the, the dad of one of those kids, I would be thinking, I paid a fee, I'm getting what I paid for. So, from one side, you're saying it's, it's not commercial, but from the other side, it's obviously commercial.
No, it is commercial, I just didn't want to leave. I had said, I, I commute every single day from Rio. So I have told the parents, I will come, I will drive, if your child feels... But we didn't teach any material, we just reviewed your practices. That's what it was, so we reviewed anything we shared.
All right, let's, let's move on to the next point.
And so, they, y'all asked for a five-year permit, or that's what the, the planning and zoning recommended?
I have another question, I wonder if this, did not, uh, responded negatively, did they give a reason, or they just said yes, no?
No, uh, it's because I think her, she's afraid that her taxes is gonna go higher.
Not, not a, not a...
The only corporate taxes will be the company owner, because they're not considered commercial, if disapproved, so not the...
No, she just said, she's involved in not having to pay any taxes.
Well, yeah, unless, it's, I mean, everybody thinks about the corporate taxes going up, because, I mean, I understand that in person.
Yeah, but it feels just, it, there's nothing there needs to be done, like, it's, it's not a, they all be getting, uh, the same area, uh, twenty-five, 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 twenty-five. I'm not good, but to me, I'm a professional, I've been a contractor in my life for thirty years, I know about permits, I know, I'm a licensed, like, professional, I'm a member of professional state, so I know, I'm just more, you know, it's not...
But then you know the process, right, to get all the permits, right? You know the process that you have to go to approve them?
Yes, and I, you know, I mean, it's a system, there'll be, I mean, there was nothing, nothing I could do, precise explanation, which I saw. I mean, I never thought of it, I mean, but that there was, like, a, a, I mean, I find a lot of things, I've gone to churches, I've done a lot of research, and I need to take them, I mean, to say, you know, it's a twenty, but there was...
I get this not precise a little bit, maybe, this question, it's just like an example, man.
It's a business.
Or it's a business, let's say, and, and maybe I'm going to exaggerate, you could just sort of make my point. Can I kick one of your restaurant? Let's say, there's a restaurant in town, and they're, you know, they're operating, and then he goes and tells them, you gotta operate, and then they continue to operate.
But it would be different if they were cooking and you don't have any food, right? Like, run around, get your stuff, and that's what she's...
I, I...
Okay, I completely understand. The way I, I approached it was, I'm gonna do this for kids, for free. I travel all the time, that's my job. So anywhere we can practice, we do. So, me don't need my time, it's just a big space. We didn't charge, so it's a thing of...
Maybe into the void, I think, I think, I always, I give a lot to, whatever I'm present. What's in me? A small building, it's, it's, it's not a building.
Yeah, I understand what you're saying, it's, it's not a complicated thing to bring a building out to code, or a residential, or let it be code, down, that's... We have every confidence. Are you registered as a business?
Yeah. As far as, um...
What's on your profile for like...
Yes, at the form of like, which is, well, all of mine.
Okay. All right, yeah, all right. So you're collecting and paying taxes, sales taxes, or do you have some stuff down there?
Yes.
Well, everybody said yes, but...
Clear, I'm gonna catch you after. Say that again.
Are you, well, when people pay tuition, do you pay sales taxes to the state, to the county, to the city?
That's what I'm asking you.
Yeah, all right. But, are you collecting?
Yes.
Are you also paying?
Yes.
All right.
Yes, sir. We are paying that.
All right, so you're, you're, you're going to, you're a business, a business, all right.
The only thing, you know, I love what you do, when you're trying to reach out, you know, is, you know, to keep businesses out of legal things, you know, that's something that... But do you have a plan, do you have a plan, or are you...
Yes, yes, sir, we are, we're moving that commercial area.
So, you know, there is, you know, we're, we're kind of, what the process of pushing, talking about that again, how, you know, you all win a ballot, you know, what's, totally wrong, right? So, now, you know, I'm not a dancer, but I, you know, I run a football league, I count, where I've got like, maybe six, seven, maybe ten thousand kids, not volunteer my time. But when I borrow the stadium from the school district, I get it with the AD. The AD has to, to, hey, first, the main office, I get assigned a bunch of pictures to get it back to AD. But I can't go on a Saturday and just play a game without, it's all in the process, but then they would, you know, so...
So if you, just, just so you can understand exactly what we, uh, if a child asks for a private lesson, you don't use the field. You use the small areas, and you can get to, get down to the middle area of what they're trying to... Right, that, it was like a private lesson, we were in a huge group of kids, and it's not like we had twenty-seven kids in class, it was three or four kids at a time. So again, in our mind, my mind was, I was getting myself, in my mind, we need to make the time to kids to get ready for all performances, was it? So, again, if it's wrong, I completely apologize to you, we respond really, we learn from you, but I am a member, I think, that's...
But that was a person, and, and, and I thank you for calling, for, I do that.
I'm super emotional, sorry.
And kids are our passion.
Yes, for my kids.
And, and we, we represent the city, you know, and we have all the guidance, so, so we understand this.
I know that if planning and zoning...
Five-year option?
Yes, if they did, but, uh, Ms. Nandine's, uh, soon as they're on the year, they will go to, 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 so, uh, they, they want to... But, planning and zoning did recommend, I find that...
So that, the head, uh, the, you're the head of the other chapter, well, that's the, it's still...
Five years, but if they left within more than two, they would go back to...
Yeah, I mean, that's what the best variance is, they revert back to residential, but within that timeframe.
And like I said, like this is small, they're gonna expand, that has to go to school. But the kids, they're gonna have, they're gonna, they're gonna, they're gonna, it's, 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 and you're gonna have to...
Yeah, we have...
Expand, and we're gonna be a year, two, a couple of years.
And the only, only process is everything is going to next come out.
Of course, yes. So we help the business, the kids get lost, or, or, or both, act as a, I mean, which is required from various organizations, I mean, you can say, that's...
And your kids, I love it.
I guess so. We have boyhood opportunities. Um, any more questions?
I'll have to come out and talk with you, so we can...
Oh, that's what we're here for. I would need a motion to approve or deny the recommendation by the planning and zoning. Okay, so now the question would be the five-year non-performing recommendation, do you want to leave it or want to keep it, or, I mean...
And I ask council, and does it actually have the five-year as written, or can we do less, a year, I'm just like, two?
Two years, right.
Can you do this?
If I have a promise to keep for a year, would you...
I agree.
Well, I'm, I think we should give them more than one year, because, I mean, they're going through an application process right now, it's under me, I mean, I'm, to say, that, that, that... Definitely, because, I mean, they have it said, and how about if they get a bump, and they can't continue, they have five years here. I'm just giving y'all... I mean, because you have to take in unexpected, obviously, I mean, we're not having so much... Yeah, that's another thing, too. How about if your interest is just not there, and you have to help them?
So what do you suggest?
That's a thing, five-year. The neighbors aren't concerned.
Yeah, well, that's, that's a good...
Well, I, I see that as the final step in the process, not the only step in the process. As the weeks go by, the neighbors will realize what's going on, or maybe it's part of the inspection, talking, how, how, like, give you a second. They'll go and ask the neighbors. And we're not gonna know until the cars start showing up, every time, or the license taken from the home. And the better we got it, the better. Is, is how the neighbors, like, who would deny, like, some of the best... Talk the less we don't have, I guess you want to...
If I could, I knew that was a number. Um, we have a drop-off system, so there, parking is not an issue. Parents walk through their gates to the doors, sign in, and have to, if, if, or that baby, because the spaces is small. We don't allow parents to sit, we don't allow them to stay because of fire codes. So, uh, to keep our kids safe, to keep everybody safe, parking is not a question, because it's a constant drop-off system. So we haven't operated for four hours a night, from four P M. to eight P M. During those hours, we have maybe five-minute traffic as people leave, others come in, and the neighbors are not complaining about that. Our noise is to a minimum, the amusement system, because it is an amusement area, that's how it is. And so far, the neighbors that I have personally spoken to have no issue with the parking, because we are the ones to be right in front of, you know, your friends, I'm a person. So, if they do say if they're not a question, they're just, yes, so they're just in and out, and so far, we haven't had anything to do with it. The only issue with neighbors is that it's lost chance, that was it.
Which in reality is just property ownership. We need most needed, there's some, there's a lot of...
I have a motion, I agree with you. Not before we use variance, but... We use, uh, residential security, uses pressure, makes dancing, uh... Go to nine, so the five years.
Motion has been made by Consoom a little, do I have a second? You have a second?
No, it's... I need some attention. I have attention. I, I support it, and I support your effort, and I know you teach, and it's not a question, and I know, I still have to ask you to choose. If I'm there to see you, I'll start, I do know where you come from. But I also know that I'm here, that's only not me, and that's any... So I need this to motion, to approve, that I, that was, um, I need to say, you're, you're my entire family, they have time, it gives me time to, uh, to, uh, process, to turn it.
I think I'm, I think that's my...
Motion has been made by Consoom, one of us, for a two-point five, non-conforming. Do I have a second? I have a second to that motion. All in favor, Nikki, by saying nine? All in, both saying nine?
All right.
All in, motion parents? We have a two-point five.
The best, the luck, and the best breath.
You guys, just because I'm not personal, I'm gonna go ahead and have the girls perform this through all of us.
That's a good...
Thank you.
Thank you.
We'll go to item number nineteen, discussion on appropriate actions to improve agency funds, request to sponsor the White House Museum, Jim Orthing.
Good evening, Mayor, can I help you, Mr.? Hooked after that hard one, if you want, please, sorry. This is your second hot request, do we do? Uh, and ours is, I represent not only the library, but White House, Memorial Museum, which is on behalf of them that we're doing the request. And what I'm basically, what we're asking for is basically the same thing we asked for us, no increases there. Uh, we understand in ninety days, and we, we resubmit the items that we produced the money for. Uh, a lot of it, we need to redo our brochures and things like that, advertising, which I think would account for about twenty-five hundred. Uh, the infrastructure improvements themselves, uh, some projectors we're doing more, uh, presentations in the museum itself, and we're gonna do some interactive displays in there also. Uh, most guys probably been there, the air display is, is famous, and it's our job to get that out, get the wood out, people throughout the state. And we have, uh, up to our brochure in a couple of years. You do get hotel traffic through there, uh, I understood from when we submitted the application, that we just, we kind of guessed to make kind of what traffic it is. I know it's several hundred, again, that depends on hotels, obviously, when they start pulling up, and people do come over there to the, not only the library, but to the museum. And in particular, the Elkman Real Road of the National Parks System, we get visitors particularly bad. They come in to get their stamps, we show them the museum and that sort of thing. And, uh, so I, I broke it down there, and I also have, um, another sheet, if you want to take a look at some of the other breakdowns. Sorry, I didn't get one for everybody, because I...
So with that stamp, you would, you'd have some idea of how many out-of-town visitors come through, the visiting business, and that, or...
Absolutely, yes, sir, because they, they come in out-of-town, almost, every one of them that gets a stamp, it's in out-of-town, and they come from all of the U S.
Do you have like a sign-up sheet, and, uh, is there, on there like a movie stain, and like, something you could react to in there, because that is very important.
No, we, we can add that, too, there's a sign on there now, but that would be a good addition, you know, and I'd probably do that with the museum, because, because we ask them to sign it when they go to the museum, and also to ask them, are you using our hotels? Uh, we'll make that a mention.
I'm, I should go over there and check on it, because I didn't, didn't see the sign, you know?
Oh.
Just so you know.
No, I appreciate that, it's a great, I have to pick that.
So one of the things on here is for signage, is there anything that's...
So one of the things on here is for signage, is there anything that, when they're coming, pretty certain that we have the White House, the museum, Starby signs and?
There's no hard signs in, in the city, it's just the brochures. Uh, we've got some other things we're putting out there, updating the website, because the website is not very good.
The signage is, have improved, by any means?
The signage is in the museum itself, yeah.
You would, uh, directing tourists your way?
Gotcha.
Coming into town at the city limits or something?
Well, you, you read the application, all of them. One of the. One of the, it's, it's restricted, but one of the things it's permitted is to fund for signage. So that's something you might want to consider. Looking at the application. Do, do you have an item there, where you're asking for $2,500 for advertising? I think that, that's appropriate, because that, that's specifically permitted by that. And promote events, which I see as the, the new real tour. That people do. I do not see an item E, thermal rest, restoration.
Should be on there, definitely, I didn't even start figuring.
No, no, I, I see it on the form.
Oh, okay, I, I.
But what I'm saying is, you're not restoring a historical building. You're, you're upgrading the, the museum and the, and county library.
Right.
And I don't believe that we can, can give funds to that.
Oh, you, it also talks, visit conserves, restore sites in museums. That, that's where we are.
That's where you can.
Did you want to add, he's going to, he's going to.
My question, Mr. Without it, we already, um, I guess, just case to say this is a different request, because we do fund the, the library. Because of this museum, for the whole town, also. So is this an additional funding that you're wanting?
No, this extension of it, I, I assume that the hotel, hotel was going away for us, that's what I was told. And that's why we came back and, and requested the year to continue another year.
No, it's a general fund.
General fund, separate. For the past four years.
For the, the museum, the White House Museum, that's what it's.
Yes, ma'am, and the general fund is for the library, that's 2,900.
That's why I was, I mean, is this an additional funding that there are two questions?
Right, yeah, I, there's two different, one's general fund, and one's not.
Yes, ma'am, it's two different funds, and last year we got it. The general fund is for the library.
Yeah, well, we, right, for the, but the, that, I was under the assumption that we already funded the museum for the.
We did last year, but I, I just thought we were supposed to submit another request, just to continue it.
So this amount reflects what we've been giving you back?
Yes, ma'am.
That's what she's been checking for.
That's my question, that's not the budget.
No, I think the hot fund is, is a long term, I believe, we got it in September.
Yeah, that's why.
And the monthly is the general fund for the library.
Yeah, so that's why, I'm, I'm sorry, but.
Okay, so we, so the general fund is on the.
They're operating.
Okay. So we could not spend hot funds for that?
No, that's why they're doing the whole thing also.
Not running, general operating, and that, that's, that's why I think that. Your, your, your curator repairs and upgrades, display cabinets, shampoo.
That's all museum, that's all museum, that's nothing we do in the general, the library.
Okay, but, but those are general upkeep. And improvement items, and hot funds is specifically to encourage visitors. So that's why I think that the, the advertising and brochures is appropriate, and the, and the money you spend on the, on the rail tours. That brings visitors down the Elkman Rail, are, are appropriate with this type of funding. And the other items, I think, would be, would have to come out of the general fund.
Oh, and the difference is, looks at the, the general fund we've been operating on now for the past seven years, it really kind of remained unchanged, and it covers the cost of operating libraries. The museum funds, the hot funds are specifically outlined for the museum itself, and some of the programs carried out for the museum. So, seriously, I mean, you got to know, you've seen it, and then the display cases can all be improved, uh, we're definitely trying to get some more interactive displays in there, that sort of thing. The carpet, we reduced the price of the carpet cleaning by four holes, as they charge, they start a lot, we've been kind of bidding out like you guys do. And that, that three to 500, I think is what we put into the carpet, through the museum.
But you're not honestly, I think, um, I mean, for the funding that you guys get, I think I'll agree with you.
Oh, I appreciate it.
Mr. Johnson, so the, to me, at the convention center, one of the odd categories is. Construction and permitting, preparing operation, so visitor information center too.
Yes.
The first one, A, construction, permitting, operating, maintenance, managing center facilities, or visitor information center. They might, they might call one of those, right? I see.
We could, we could make that claim, I suppose.
Visitor information center.
We do a lot of that.
All right, so I'm, to back up, I'm getting, is this? In, in place of the general fund, support for the library, or is it a separate, is that right?
There's one thing on your, I advise them, on the prices, summer reading prices. You didn't put that here, that's not a, I think that's an eligibility right here. Either reading, or reading, right?
Right.
Now, when you, hi, so you're not bringing in those states?
No, I understand, no, I understand, I understand, I, you know, I put that there, you're right, uh, I think that, for last year's, and the last year's, they, they referred, and that's fine, I, I, I get it. I'm not going to take that out, it's not going to tell us.
They also, tissues, just off these ones, with the city of.
City of Prisa Springs, I, I made that note, the big city of. This is going to be totally separate with the county, we have, we have something different, it's not funded, that's all. I just go to the, the county library, the White House, or your G M, the cities, so.
Are you sure?
Yeah, no question. You can get a better projector in there, yeah, absolutely, that's the end of that year.
Were you reprising that the $10,000 that I was saying was not just for rest, restoration, preservation? You're going to put that entirely on even, under A?
Not entirely, because, uh, the average month.
That's not promotional program, it needs promotional program for.
The item E, $10,000, so if you, we're not, it's not just for rest, restoration.
Oh, right, no.
And you're saying you would support that $10,000, or some lesser amount, as item A?
As item A, because that's where it is. Sorry, I'm sorry.
No, that, no problem.
Right here.
One, one more thing. The process is, is, uh, set up for events, and so that's why we have that, the 90 days after the report. How did it go, where did the money go, how much, how much traffic we can generate, that's not going to happen here.
Well, the annual thing, I think what we did last year was, included a lot of these improvements. I mean, within the first 90 days, we know what the things, we may not cover all of that, but I, I can imagine, based on the past history that I've read, it covers about 90% of it.
Okay, my, that's, my concern though is, uh, how much tourism did you generate? That's going to take you a year to find out.
I think so.
So keep that in mind as you prepare for this application next year. If you, and if you can show that people made overnight stays, entries, swings, on how this.
Yes, sir, we're going to make sure that, that would, that would be golden.
Yes, sir, got you.
We'll make that a great decision.
Any more questions, concerns? I would need a motion to approve or deny.
I think motion will approve item 19, that fund's requested, for the sponsor of the White House Museum, the carpet, and not.
Motion has been made by councilman Little, do I have a second?
Second.
Second is by councilman Little, all in favor, Nikki, by saying nine? All posting sign, motion is heard.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Hope see all of those.
Thank you, please, for your support.
We go to item number 20, discussion on appropriate action on approaching funds for the BFW, I'm a fundraising, picture given, so.
There's a legal issue with this request, regardless, it wouldn't be lawful to make such a donation, so, throw that out there.
I don't have any further. No, there's, we can't make this.
Have to serve a public purpose.
So we, no discussion or action? He, then doesn't qualify for the common.
That's a, your restoration.
He's telling us it doesn't qualify for events, is there another, maybe there are challenges?
Texas Constitution prohibits these kind of donations, um, from the city to an entity like this.
Thank you.
To an entity like this, for the purpose.
So no action is needed on item number 20?
Do you need to ask for a motion, or just?
No, I can, okay.
Take, take no action, they can't judge.
We go to item number 21, municipal judge, front to store, going for quartering report.
Good evening, counsel. After each day, the quarter reports for the second quarter of this year, 2016. What I have generated is first hand data. If reports are generated by the computer, then I can, certainly, I can see, I see, I'm already moving along, so you know where to come from. First page is fairly simple, that 474 number you see on the bottom, is how many transactions occurred during April, May, June. So 474 times, you have to, or you close it. And the, on the right next to it, the 88,000 is the amount that we collect, for, for, it says.
J H.
That's for June. J H is the person. Turn to the next page. At the bottom right here, as we told them, now, can we pay off to the state? It's pretty clear, now, as I mentioned before, it's not always an, an exact same, it's not almost 100% that happens, it varies by, as it varies. Actually, the, the request for. The very last page is our, my, my, the CDs, which ordered up to 15, 15, I know, for the students. So, what I made was, I had to make was figures to this second hand app that I had for you. On this second hand app, I have all of the numbers for each quarter from 2010, I'm not sure.
Okay, so while looking at this second page, you've collected that amount, and you gave, and we're only, are you going to?
About $6,500.
Now, looking at this second page too.
Yeah. And I have it on the second one, which I wanted to, guys, to notice. We go to the last page, that very last line that says, come 16, quarter two, which is the number that I just gave you, 88,000, minus 21, that's the one, 26,400.
Mr. Johnson, I hear you say, April to June, but it's just June listed, is that correct?
No, I just, you know, it's.
That's from April first.
Just April, I want to be, um, some things identified, okay? Different from the other one.
With the C A.
Correct me.
So that revenue is low, or revenue is high?
Where?
So that, that, what you see, because I told you that, that was true.
Let's say it's a $200 ticket, they charge a 30% to the person, so, you know, we still go a better, you know, it's 250. But $260 comes to us, we still collect 100, 200, this is dollars, this is.
So this amount reflects what was given to us, or reflects?
That amount reflects the wish we were there, because it was paid to us.
And who is our collection agent? So I can see in, in the, in the data you have here, it's a higher number than 2010, 2014, but of course, then 2014.
There was, least of 40, there was one officer, there was 15 officers, there were numerous other clerks, uh, there was a post-buried client. Johnny, if you wanted to, but. Of course, the morning, we have one of those, we have a, we have a.
And we must, we must those all, other than this.
You know, which is fake.
Looking at that, look at our, 2014, 11, what I'm looking at.
I'm going to, just because some of the sections today, I'm telling you, great, come on.
Leaving the ticket.
I tried to give it, that's all, for five months, for election agency, we're not done.
With what we're left with, and what we have, if we look at quarter one and quarter two, if you are going to, it's not, not.
I have a scan for myself, so, so, last month, we had myself, which is first, so, probably not.
That's what we have in two quarters right there. Do you have anything else, pressure?
Oh, do you have anything else?
Thank you.
Thank you.
We go to item number 22, discussion on supervisors, once a report, we start with A, managing reels, utility supervisor. Is that, we're not in the mail? That's not.
No, that's, uh, that's we're in the, yes, yes.
What is it for me? She has the line location.
So, can just help to change the, 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 the.
I was trying to pay the, that, um, Paulie Hope, several, so, it took time, and so, I do work for ten years, that's why I started.
So, your criminals are gonna be over there? Nah.
He, uh, they go back to Mitchell, they, they, they're on the side. All the friends, they have stay, I should, really have stayed.
Yeah.
Yeah, all weekend, and it's more than that, and it wasn't all the end.
Anything else for us? You don't have anything? No, I need the picture. Thank you, ma'am. We go.
Kind of like, I was checking, just think about our, our. Should we do these first, so far, you having a near, Paulie, I mean, we worked all day, should we put those first, to our, to our?
The support, on the top of the agenda?
So, then, um, we're gonna, we're gonna, we're personal there, just a thought.
Yeah, I, I had a conversation with, uh, John, and Silverville, and have a special meeting only for reports. I was gonna suggest that, for the, for the, because he is a market, like.
Yeah, I can still, um, we have a first, special meeting.
We go to item B, John, somebody open the door, sir.
I'm there, I'm just, can you have something, I need to report? I just touch on the highlights. Last month, I gave you a number, with a, Jen's, with a, with a, with a, with a, with a, with a, with a three eight million four forty eighth. This month, it's been, it's been, it's been, it's been seventeen twenty-six, maybe more, I think, enough, what I'm saying, seventy-seven thousand, uh, just, uh, touch, I'm just, I'm just, I'm just, I, I, I assume so, our customers, they want that, what they need.
We like the update every month because if we have, if we have concerns or... Well, not on the reports, but I do want the present here every month because Concerns and everything come to us on a daily basis. And when we come to you, I think you're sick of it.
Do you have any opposition?
We only have the one. As I said, it's taken out twenty-four hours out. The only one that came back. We missed, nobody. They didn't answer back. Only had two that worked. I've only had one that came back.
Okay, I'm gonna ask, were the applicants, um... Were they aware of the process? The way the planning and zoning works? As far as the recommendation and then the council gets the plan?
Yes. She was aware, but she had the application. Even then.
Okay.
They did continue operating. Uh, when she made her application, I told her, said, "There's..." They see it, so she had already started before making the application. We found out, and I told her to continue to stop. Some people planning zoning, they come to work.
What happened?
Uh, no, apparently they came out. Uh, they, I think, they came calling personally. This is when I made contact with you. It was Thursday. I made contact with, uh, Nandine, an advisor, she needed to stop. She had been told. And I believe they did stop, uh, Nandine.
And the reason for them to continue was?
I don't know, why they, why they continued.
Or was it just that there's streets where I already done it?
Jewish, Jewish. But you were on the right path prior to moving. Okay, prior to prior to, and then you went to tell me that. But once he told you to stop. And then we already started the process. But the law, the law, I mean, I, you know me, I'm about the law. So, why you need to stop and visit with whoever, with the parents, whatever, with your customers? So you know what? We're gonna go through this process, and then when we'll continue, and we'll just get your, you know, the fees and add them up. That was one way. So, boy, now, someone coming to, you didn't stop, then I guess. You know? So, uh, good timing.
I've been a professional for twelve years. I am a collegiate head and pitch your advanced coach. I went to training you as a charity coach, and now I'm contracted back with them. I've recently relocated here. In our industry, it is based on who is teaching each other. And the way our business plans is we need to reach out once we have the beginning. And then it runs through the selecting janitor, or whatever, gonna go to the next level. We did tell our parents, or at least I did, that we were going through this issue. But I told them I would volunteer on site. And they were not willing to pay. It's different when you're running a business where you don't continue to pay. Oh, I want private classes, I want this, we never, we never had a private class. Basically, they didn't, they still haven't paid tuition. After they, those that chose to, they said, "Well, just take my tuition after you get hurt." And we have it on hold. But we have certain responsibilities down. We're going to be giving upgrades, we're going to be giving back to community, we're going to be helping the elderly, we're going to do fundraisers, as community events. But we have to be prepared. Just like a cheerleading team or a dance team in school. The sponsors, I believe, get us Skype in, but they spend hours of practice that we don't get paid for. That's kind of what, how we run it too. So, they pay for tuition for that first fund. Then we found out, I wanna say, one week, there was one week left in the month. And then we stopped, or we were planning on stopping, and I said, "Well, I'll still come, like, don't pay the tuition. It'll be volunteer basis until the next month." So...
Well, that, that doesn't really answer the question. Pardon me for...
No, not our problem.
But the question was, well, when you found out that there was a process you had to go through, you didn't comply, you couldn't legally operate a business?
We weren't operating a business. It was purely volunteer basis, me working with students.
No.
Yes, sir. I'm a charity worker, I, I vote...
Well, I, I think, I think you're explaining errors here. People didn't pay. And then you say, "Oh, for this week, they're not paying for this week, but they're still operating." And that's, that's kind of having a whole place.
Um, if I made a challenge of, then they didn't want to pay for the next month. The next month's fees were already given. So, because we did not charge them those fees, we did operate free. Until we got a second phone call, they said they're gonna be citing us, even if we came around time, around time.
Exactly.
And then...
It has not yet been approved.
They, they had a balance that I, I know. It's not approved by, by the planning. Yes, but they just recommended to see. They have a financial... But they recommend...
The, the, the problem is, because, don't get me wrong, give me my personal opinion, I, I mean, I commend y'all for bringing something into the town that has not been brought in, right? But there's a process. So as well as you have your support, you do have people contacting, "Hey, these people are what, I mean, they're blocking the street." I mean, you have either four or yes, so we're like, "What is going on?"
Well, I mean, in, in the first instance, you see, you just follow. Before even attempting to open a business, because they didn't know that already. Hey, now, if there's a fire, an emergency, somebody gets hurt, who are they gonna come to? That's completely... You guys didn't have a permit, and we didn't shut you down. If something would have happened, right? They would have come to us. And they would have put it in the, in the fast spot. Because you, we let you operate without a permit. So, you know, they'll say, "Well, let's say you're at a month, pretty efficient, stop them." 'Cause they were approved the permit, and then everything else was on the line.
I see what you're hoping for. I guess I, I'm basically, coming from a background where I've never had issues. I had a studio opening in the past. Miss Ferguson, or Miss, I forget the last name. Nandine, yes, in Carney. Uh, Miss Nandine and I have been working together as colleagues for seven years. Her, she was the volunteer debt sponsor that I would come and do their fair. During those businesses, during that, I had a separate business in the past. And same situation. As long as we were, you know, whoever owned that building, we were trying to work with him. It wasn't residential, so this is the first time I've ever had issues in a residential area. If we only gave them buildings or bought another music.
See, we're not questioning the work, we actually recognize the work. I mean, we recognize we're in the quality of this.
Yes.
But that's not the, what we're, the issue is not the work, or it's the way we did it.
I, I completely understand that.
It's just like having a tour service with all these trucks next door to your house. And, "Oh, we need a permit, oh, uh, no, it has to..." And, and I, and I can kind of sympathize with my, when my daughter was the... We wanted, we brought inside from the ride-out. We couldn't do it in anybody's home. Episcopal churches, the one who let us through.
Well, that's amazing. But again, I had never had, I was kind of doing it as, I've had a business, let me go ahead and coach you. So, the anxiety was the same. Because I had never had an issue in a residential area, which is why we opened before we had a permit. I was not aware, I had never had an issue before, and that's because I've been doing this for twelve years. So, again, my apologies, I was not aware of the city policies. But I have responsibility to my kids, when you have a performance, I'm not, I have a volunteer time. We did not take those statements on the week they were due, because we said, "I, you know what, don't pay, wait. But if you want to come, I will be there." That was me. So, when it comes to, I understand, why didn't you stop? We're not to perform. I'm not gonna, this is, stand up for something, go out there.
Has a, has a Lincoln expected code? Well, even at that too, if we get approved with the line, you still have to go under the check, and maybe not pass.
So you might get another one?
I'm just giving you the...
No, no, I understand, I mean, we have so many...
No, I'm not...
But we do, 'cause like, if something happens, may I thank, may I thank... I, it should protect you.
I understand, but again, I feel like we, we're gonna have some questions. Again, I've had a successful business, we have our exercises, we have whatever fire hazards we have, we're ready.
You know, and, and I think I'm my two cents right here, because, not about what they... I, I, I know neither of you said that we might have some... We're all, we're all...
Yes, it's...
But please make sure that everyone knows that. And I commend you, and you know me, I commend you. I used to be your sponsor, and I encourage you, so I love that, that's my passion. But, okay, I hear you say two things now. I heard you talk to her, but she said, so first thing, first statement, I may have a wrong... She said, first she said, "You, you already got the tuition bill, right, and the kids." Okay, and then you said, "No, because I had, I gave him a week." So, let, let me... It's that way, you're happy. And the other thing that I hear you say repeatedly is that you're just in a profession, you've done this before. Well, then, if you have done this before, then why don't you go through the process?
Because we've never had these whole processes. I've never been looking for this before. But to answer your question, to clarify, we had a registration process. That is where that first tuition came from. So, we had a registration process where they had paid ahead of time. And then we, the way we do it, the first, or the, the week right before the first of the month? That's when we had plans and had the second tuition due. That was the week that we had stopped. No, 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 that was the week, that, we had just realized, "I will do it for free, you don't have to pay this much tuition at all."
That's, that's between, that's between you and the owner. If, if I was the, the dad of one of those kids, I would be thinking, "I paid a fee, I'm getting what I paid for." So, from one side, you're saying it's, it's not commercial, but from the other side, it's obviously...
No, it is commercial, I just... I had said, "I, I can be in every single day from radio." So, I have told the parents, "I will come, I will drive if your child feels..." But we didn't teach any material, we just reviewed your the practice. That's what it was, so we reviewed anything to...
All right, let's, let's move on to the next point.
They, y'all asked for a budget question, or that's what they're talking about, planning and zoning recommendation?
I have another question, the one that just did not, uh, respond negatively, did they give a reason? Or they just said, "Yes, no, or..."
No, uh, just because I think her, she's afraid that her taxes is gonna go high.
Yeah, not a, not a... The only corporate taxes will be the corporate owners, because they're not considered commercial, if disapproved. So, not the...
No, she just sent, she didn't call me, not out, trying to...
Well, yeah, and it's, it's, I mean, everybody thinks about the corporate taxes walking up, because, I mean, I understand that person's...
Yeah, but it feels just...
But then you know the process, right, to get all the permits, right? You know, the process that you have to go through.
Yes, and I, you know, I mean, it's a consistent, I mean, there was nothing, nothing I could come to a precise explanation, so... I mean, I never thought of it, I mean, that, that was, like, a permit, I mean, I've done a lot of things, I've done churches, but a lot of construction, I mean, I didn't take them, I mean, to say here, it's a twenty, but they were...
I guess it's not the size of the building, maybe this question, it's just like, for example, man, or it's a business, let's say, and, and maybe I'm going to exaggerate, just to make my point. Can I kick on your restaurant? Let's say, there's a restaurant in town, and they're fun, you know, they're operating, and then he goes and tells them to not operate, and then they continue to operate.
But it would be different if they were cooking and don't need food, right? Like, from their own business, a business, a business, and that's what she said, I pointed that for her, she wrote. Okay, I completely understand. The way I, I approached it was, I'm gonna do this for kids for free. I travel all the time, that's my job. So, anywhere we can practice, we do. So, me don't need my time, it's just a big state. We didn't charge, or anything that...
I may get to the board and see if they can... I give a lot there, whatever I practice. It's a small building, it's six, it's not a building.
Yeah, I understand what you're saying, it's, it's not a complicated thing to bring a building up and quote it, for a residential, when it's spoken in the first place. Yeah, that's, we, we have every confidence, we do, we do that. Are you registered as a business?
Yeah, or as like...
You're just, you're probably for like...
As of the quarter, I would, which is what I'm hoping for.
Okay. All right, yeah, all right. So, you're collecting and paying taxes, sales taxes, and... You're, you're something like that?
Yes.
Well, everybody say yes, but...
Where's the documentation?
Are you, well, when people pay tuition, do you pay sales taxes to the state, to the county, to the city? Yep, all right. It's very similar to Jordan House. But, while you're collecting, are you also paid?
Yes.
All right.
Yes, sir. We are paying that.
All right, so you're, you're, you're a going concern, you're a business official, all right?
The only thing, you know, I love what you do, I mean, you're, you're doing a great job with the department heads, you know, is, you know, to keep businesses out of legal things, you know, that's something that...
Yeah, we have to hear.
But do you have a plan? Do you have a plan? Where are you?
Yes, yes, sir, we are, we're moving that most commercial area.
So, you know, the reason, you know, we're, we're kind of, well, the process of course, we talked about that again, how, you know, you all went about it, you know, this photograph, right? So, now, you know, I'm not a dancer, but I'm, you know, I run a football league, I have, like, maybe six, seven, ten thousand kids. Not volunteer, right? But when I borrow the stadium from the school district, I gotta go to the A D. The A D has to, to, like, first to the main office. I gotta sign a bunch of papers, like, to A D. But I can't go on a Saturday and just play a game without, it's all in the process, right? Then they would have cut me out.
I understand.
You know, so...
So, if you, just, just so you can understand exactly what I mean, uh, if a child asks for a private lesson, you don't use the field. You use the small areas, and you get to protect, get down to the middle period of what they're trying to...
Yeah, well, I'm, you know...
Right, that, it was like a private lesson, we were teaching groups of kids, and it's not like we had twenty-seven kids in a class. It was three or four kids at a time. So, again, in our mind, I find, I'll speak on this up, in my mind, it would need going to time to kids to get ready for all the work. So, again, if it's long, I completely apologize to you, completely responsible you. But I am a member, that understands...
But that was the first time, and, and, and I thank you for calling. I do that.
I'm super emotional, something.
No, 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 and kids are our family.
Yes, for my people.
And, and we, we represent this city, you know, and we have a policy, so, so we understand this.
I know that if Nandine is only five...
Five months?
Yes, they did, but, uh, Miss Nandine is, uh, same age as one year. They will not... But Nandine is only bigger than my apartment.
So, that, perhaps, uh, they...
Well, they said, they said, uh, five years, but if they left within one or two, they would go back to...
Well, I mean, that's what the best variance is, it reverts back to residential, but within that timeframe.
And that they said, like, this is small, they're gonna expand, that has to go to school. But the kids, they're gonna have... So, they'll expand, and they'll run a year, two or three years, and we have time to do that.
That's the only, only concept, and everything who goes next to that.
Of course, it's, it's, I mean, help that our business...
It's only been a couple of months.
Why, they're all, "Here comes the mayor again."
And I don't know, I don't know. I agree on that, for that to come before, but it doesn't have to be like this detail, to support their time in this. I heard another one that you think of.
Here's what I would suggest, I like your suggestion about putting the department heads on the top of the agenda, that way, because they work all day, they come in, and they give their report, and they're gone. But secondly, I think the suggestion for a quarterly report is good, because you can see more, more progress on, on a quarterly basis. But if at any time, uh, there are questions about, uh, particular projects, or items on the department's work schedule that the city council is interested in, knowing about, then, then I think we can, in addition to the quarterly report...
Attend a meeting?
They can attend a meeting. And, and that way, you don't get all of the department heads here at the same time, but those that you have particular questions regarding, uh, whatever complaints you may get from the...
And I guess, like, you, like the mayor said, very determined for thinking, but do we really need to do that? We have to do it every day, and, you know what I mean? Or is it just a summary, oh, these are the major projects we're doing, this is where we look at bump in the road? That's just me.
Well, we, you can point to this, I mean, they can do the section in town. And you can put that, you know, we did section, you know, from the family down all the way to, uh, Queth Street. You have to put down, like, at the branch from that corner.
So, do you want to work on that?
We'll work on that.
Like a, a summary, I guess, is what we're asking.
Are you doing it in a form on, online, we just do drop-down menus and...
As a force by section, right?
I see what I do that is, is for you all to over, all that has to do.
Yeah, I know, it's real good. Yeah, there's a lot of time. I know, and, and that, I don't think that was the intent, I don't think that's the purpose.
I'll give you a chance with that, you will need to get...
So, I just saw this one, I have a stall bench on concrete, so you don't push the bench.
Is it ready?
I missed it. I missed it.
Okay. I'm so sorry.
Say you have a dog bench, you said that one with the...
The logos, the little pricey logo one. Don't let anybody sit on it.
Actually, we took the one on the parking, um, on the Detroit.
How is this gonna sit because you...
Okay, anything else for... Thank you, you're doing a good job, thank you. Uh, we go to item D, Razzy Castillo, water department supervisor.
Razzy was in a car accident, yeah, last week.
Well, I have a, a long clip, can I, who'd I, who'd I put that with? All right, sir, come on up.
I hope he's right, okay?
Yes, well, he's fine, he just got a bill up, he just went in with the hospital, out the same day.
Okay, sir, my question. On call, his phone. Who answers it? I know the person on call, that's the, right. Do they screen the calls, or no? Is that what they're doing? And I, and I, I'm gonna give you an example. Got a call. A long story short, the sheriff's department was calling the, uh, somebody to the sheriff's department was calling the on-call number. I called for my personal. Uh, I can show you how many times, maybe last weekend. Finally, I got smart, and I said, "Okay, well, let me text this person that it's me calling." I just, I text, random text, "Who's on call?", that's all I wanted to know. "Oh, uh, it's me, I'm sorry, I'm just getting some house. I've been calling you ten times, why aren't you answering your phone?" Are they screening calls, is that what's going on?
No, I don't think it just, what did I put your name? Does I do call on the weekends, or...
Yeah, but you're, you're, you're their supervisor, so yeah, you're, you're, they're gonna answer your call. But I mean, the sheriff's department, I mean...
Yeah, the problem is the weekend, can we get a person on the desk to call? I've been going during daytime, which is going, same call. I was trying to check into it.
Yeah, because, I mean, if they're screening calls, then what's the point of having somebody with a phone on call?
Again, I'm talking about time, I'm running, question, can you... Oh, I'll check in. Is that speaking?
Hmm, I'll hold on, I'm checking this, I'll tell you right now. And it was just a simple question, who's on call? That's all I wanted to know, and then that person on call, "Well, I'm sorry, uh, I was like, dude, can you..." Did you hold? It was a Saturday, uh... Ju- July thirtieth, and I text this person at 1:43.
Yeah?
Yeah. And I texted, "This is Nina Valita, and whoever on call, call me."
Oh, he answered to her, that's, that, that covers, is it?
Well, that, that, that's, it's because, I mean, you don't call, you haven't called, why aren't you answering it? That's why I'm saying, yeah, because we have questions and concerns that, I mean, I'm literally, I'm... Anyways, well, thank you, sir, appreciate that, thank you. Uh, we got item E, Justin Ambosa, landfill supervisor. Okay, Justin, on vacation, did you review, has any questions for this, for the...
No, but I have a comment. I went and used our landfill, you know, maybe two or three weeks ago, it is so nice. It's neat, um, everything is neat.
Can tell it's a landfill.
I tell it's a landfill. You know, it's a landfill, I was so impressed, I was so, gonna drop the brush.
On this landfill report, would you like something like this, this first page, it says something more, and, and get rid of all this other statistical stuff?
Again, sir, yeah, or, I just on this...
Or let it show, I'm using this as an example, they just have the first page, it's summarized.
Yes, like this, perfect. And just, you don't have to put what they're doing in, I mean, we aren't, that's integrity, we're gonna work. But, but it's just, the main project, you know, pressure project. That's just me, though.
Yeah.
And then they can attend the meeting.
Yeah.
Well, they, they wanna see that they're accountable for their work.
Exactly.
Is, is that for city council, or is that for you, to see all that detail?
The, the detail is more for me, the city council, I have a summary.
Yes.
Yeah, I'm more interested in how's it going, where's the trends? And, uh, where's the new issues?
And my, my, my opinion is, like I said, concerns, they come at all times, day, night, every day. And I, I mean...
And you get it.
Yes, I do, I really do. And I don't mind addressing them, but I, sometimes I'm, I'm foolish. You know, and I'm all like, "Wait, hold on, let me get an answer for you." Who do I get it from, besides you, or something, you know? Okay, um, go to item S, Estela Northie, city marshal.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Can, can you, can you imagine?
Sure.
But why does he step in at like thirty-eight or ninety-nine, so he can, like, learn? He's already on top.
I don't worry.
Waiting for, oh, well, or even, there, about seeing, um...
Well, I, hey, there's a reason, yeah. I think we're back to, back to...
Exactly, that's what I was...
But now, you're right. Last month, it was three or four pages of, you know, taking a ticket.
Yeah, that's kind of...
Yeah.
So, it worked.
Yeah, and then it's created towards it, but then the opposite.
Did you notice that? That you're going, question, or a question?
Yeah, that's my head.
Yeah, I need, I need a question, I mean, I don't want this to...
Why the trend? Everybody's gonna work on the trend from issuing the citation and issuing that one.
That's on one month, right? Time? Yes.
You guys saw what you want.
Yeah. Do they have my tickets?
No.
It's not today's, no.
Citation.
Uh, so we should have. Because I do get tickets as well.
In the past we have.
Oh, you know, no, your name is not on the...
Submitted to the park, I guess, rather than... Being together in front of you.
I think skip the last one, we'll have a report. But I believe it's always good. Like you, I don't know, he's got something. I mean, the majority gonna be...
I see.
Okay, but yeah, this, on this report, it's all...
Any other questions?
On my report, actually, it's myself and Mr. Dada here. I'm still doing a lot of enforcement. We'll be together, we'll be talking together on both. You know, my detail, uh, I changed my report because the mayor said last month she wanted a detailed... So, I, I thought it was, the other way around was summary that you all wanted. Now, I changed it, I follow from yesterday and transitioned it to the same thing. But, uh...
Sorry, that was just me. If I could say that's the one.
Yes, yes. But my report is there. If you have any questions on, I guess, on anything, for the board, I think you will get it.
Yes, I do have. Why is he doing, why is he doing the bank bid? Why is he doing the bank bid?
The bank is...
The, the depository.
Well, the bank is gone.
That was in this year before?
So we go and, we take the money as a purpose?
No, 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 no. Your bank depository agreement is for the pressure. Why would he, why would court enforcement be with...
What? My reporting?
There must be a mistake here. The collating must be, the bank depository agreement is, it's my idea.
Exactly, so why is it on his, his report? But that just really threw me off because I'm like, why are you doing it?
Oh, that's not mine either. Mine is something like this.
Yeah, I know, you always give it. I don't have that. I really don't. We don't have that.
You're fine, you don't have that.
No, I don't have that. So this is what I have in my packet, which I was like, why?
You don't have it all the time. No, I have this.
That's mine.
Well, that's why I was like, I was gonna, another bunch of people, like, why are you doing the bids? I mean, why does he have to go with bids?
No, it's not their report, but it's my report. I think when you're collating the documents...
Yeah, I got this. Oh, yeah, I read between...
See, I got, I got copies of the ordinance of the mobile home right now.
Yeah, it's my report.
That's yours, city manager report?
Well, after 1,000 pages, that one mistake.
But, okay, so then this is your report that I did not get, right?
Yes.
What report is that?
Yeah.
Unless it's in the wrong place. See, I got all this general services I've got.
You did, you said something, you did put it in there.
Sorry.
So...
Where's the report? This is it.
This is the back. Those are all orders that you were doing.
Where is this report?
That's a good one.
I think I see that it, that's the, the term he gave you.
On the more report.
And if we have, if we have less office support, couldn't collect it all, sure.
See, this is like, thank you. This is like, oh, thank you. I'm sorry, I'm barely seeing it right now. I don't have something to pick on me. Thank you. Yeah, I really am doing it. Are we on the meeting ops?
It's, it's only been, it's different. I said that was better, the last time, actually, we had a call, one of them, the one of them that the year, one of the workers...
I have a...
No, they're, they're...
I have a question, because there's a lot on, it's gonna be the end of 13th Street, like part of the cemetery. It's really big, but they have a for sale site. Who do you send the letter to? People that are, what do you say, people or the...
They're being...
Yeah, right, right there is a little corner house.
For the video.
It will go to the owner, or not to the people that, like, have a for sale.
Would you go on Thompson 13?
Uh, yeah, Tom- Thompson and 13, there's a little house in this part of, right next door to it, there's a for sale site, I don't know.
That belongs to Mr. Gavin, as I, I can't, I can't...
There's a for sale site?
The, I even called the, yes, it has the, Bill said, I called her, she told me a fact, and she said that he don't have it in my... And he's in Austin, and apparently, I checked him taxes on him. He has paid for it. And that's one of them that I have is Jimmy Caleo, which we have to...
Yeah, I, I noticed that one. I, it caught my eye.
And then on the same side, the last side, right, or the center, is that, it's one, and that was also, and that one, I think it's already taken out taxes. And it's on the school.
That one's on the school. Okay, well, I will change my question, who gets the letter since it's for sale?
I, I called it, it...
Later. Thank you.
But that's one of them, yeah, I gave to Mr. Caleo.
Okay. Do you have anything else for, you know, or...
Nobody is watching.
On Vineyard Street? Right next to Dr. Lee?
Is it ours?
I had one before, before, uh, I had mentioned to him.
Is this it? Who do you have to speak?
I mentioned to him, I showed him, and then I, he said, no, he's... He waited down, just so that you come buy a sheep and not, buy the property sheep and, and, and... And we're gonna do all the work for him, I said. But I haven't told Mr. Caleo, but there's something...
I think we told two versus one. Is our report complete? You have anything for us?
Thank you.
Thank you. No, I don't remember telling you, you said you had a report. No, I mean, is your report that I'm looking at?
I'm not sure. Yes, it should be, it should be my report. It's basically a two-month report. You know, it started off Jim Seck's and went into a budget process right away. And there were a number of meetings to get to the approval of it, because on the brief term, so, I'm gonna put it back on that. Wastewater treatment plant construction is, we think proceeding on, on schedule. We're hoping, I had mentioned in this report, December, February, January. But now we're looking at January for resupply. So it depends on the weather, it's been really hot. And so that set an impact on, on the construction. Had several meetings and discussions with Jeff Snowden regarding the utility rate analysis project that he just presented this evening. And we talked about possibly looking into our franchise agreements. Talked to him last week about, we had an agreement with A and P. We had an agreement on the South Extranet Bell. And we have several other smaller agreements that, some of these are fairly old. And the fees that we're receiving from those brands up to date are current, and that we're receiving revenues that we should be receiving. So I talked to Mr. Snowden about that, and we'll be getting together to do a little more research in that area. Look at the franchise agreements that we have, and look forward to some recognition, the city council, whether or not the fees are, are below what they should be. Debt service schedules, uh, work with our financial advisors to look at our current outstanding debt. Last year, we had total debt service payment requirements of a million fifty thousand. And this year, uh, from the effective tax rate report that was given in from the work we've done with our financial advisor and loan council, we've increased to an offset service to a million three hundred and thirty-two thousand five hundred and sixteen dollars. So we're not significant yet. And, uh, we're hoping that we'll be, discussion about the current utility rates that the council considers, some of the suggestions that Mr. Snowden made this evening. By doing that, we'll be able to better address our debt service requirements and pretty much save our credit rating. Because we don't want to increase any bonds or certificates of obligation. That would be disastrous for us, not in the present, but in the future, as the city attempts to acquire funding for public improvement projects. Debt service, oh, the, uh, we talked a little bit about the effective tax rate this evening. And with the council's adoption of the effective tax rate, and if we include the city council coming going into public hearing processes. So, as was discussed by Ms. Sondra, rather than the suggested dates that you're seeing here for public hearings, there will only be a requirement to be on September the 6th to adopt the, uh, the tax rate for the city in courses and... Debt service payments, we had some cash flow problems, and of course, we had to look at liquidating some of our unencumbered certificates of obligation. Uh, we did that, we met all of the debt service requirements for August, of course. So we're good there. We continue to talk about possibly issuing a tax anticipation note. To get us through, uh, now and a latter part of October. Our revenue streams will start to improve in November, December, January, and February. And, uh, but we need a little boost right now. There is some, some cash available in one of the city's escrow funds, and that would be city street escrow. Those funds are intended for street improvement projects. And break in any time you like, Mayor, if you can receive it for a few years. So we're looking, we're looking at recommending to the city council a possible transfer of about $300,000 out of the $349,000 street escrow account to the general fund to help us get through the dry revenue period that's taking place right now. And that is one of the items that I'd like to suggest the city council consider, uh, opening a special session on. Possibly as, as early as next week if you're available to meet. We're expecting some sales tax allocation funds to come in Friday. However, they don't pour to the bank until, I'll, sometime Tuesday afternoon. Those funds will be used to meet next week's payroll, as well as some of our operating expenses. So the sooner we can get the transfer of those $300,000 street escrow to the general fund, I hope that that'll also do.
I have a question. So that's shifting money from one account to another, or from an escrow account to the general fund. Educating on this tax anticipation note, is that an order?
Uh, the tax anticipation note is actually the short-term moraling. Our city charter allows for short-term moraling, wherein the funds are paid back from current year revenue. And so, uh, we have a total of about $600,000 currently outstanding unpaid bills. And so, uh, unfortunate that we, we would be used to begin to pay off some of those unpaid bills. Fortunate that would be used to, to this make it through until November.
And then, and then in the business, this escrow, pulling from this escrow to the general fund.
Exactly, pulling from the escrow initially, and seeing if we can lessen the amount of the tax anticipation note that might be issued. Uh, my concern is that if we issue a $600,000 tax anticipation note, that we won't have the revenue at the end of the year to make that, and, uh... And so if we're looking maybe at a $300,000 note or something less than that, I believe we can, we can handle that, but not, not a $600,000 tax anticipation. Where we have on the fund balance? Uh, the fund balance on the, on the general fund, I sent our financial advisors some information this afternoon. And they were looking at the simple debt service accounts. We have, uh, about, a little over $2 million in fund balance across the board for all accounts. I don't have my bank statement, but a million three of that is hotel occupancy accounts. And so that's half of what we have. Right now in the general fund, uh, yesterday, I believe, we had about a $65,000 balance. Let's take a, we had about a $350,000 balance in water, which is our, our next biggest revenue source. And, uh, of the $350,000 on water, and we looked at it a little earlier, we've got a $40,000 payment on that clarifier, which is the general fund responsible for. So that's a big chunk that would be fifteen. In addition to that, we have some utility bills to pay, and, uh, so I think we're gonna see a pretty significant drop in, in, uh, the water fund balance from $315,000 to maybe $200,000. But it'll still be okay. If we get the, uh, sales tax, uh, allocation in this week, and excessively next week at the end, and we all authorize a transfer, it'll be good for the next two, maybe three months. And it will give us time to prepare for the issue of the tax anticipation note. There'll still be a lag in time until we're considered for that item. So, uh, I think we'll be okay until we hit our limit. And, uh, then we've put a freeze on purchases. We have some equipment that's down right now that requires a substantial amount of need to repair. Uh, so we have smaller items that, thanks to Mr. Martin, has mentioned, one of our, a couple of our backhoes needs great, uh, jobs. We're looking at a thousand or two thousand dollars for a great job. We need to have that equipment out and working for, we're not operating. So, uh, we're working on getting our fleet, uh, remaining in operation and out in the street doing our public service work. Any other questions about the debt service? The volunteer fire department, just, uh, I'm sorry, just appointed a new assistant chief. We had met, I had reviewed their bylaws and learned some suggestions to them, which they're working on. It's internal to them because we really don't have anything to do with the volunteer fire department. So, uh, they're working on that, and I haven't heard any negative feedback from the fire, the volunteer fire department, so...
The fire, the change in fire department, the fire, the mobile home, uh, it just happened Thursday. Yeah, I'm trying to choose a way by the change in fire department, the fire, the local home, to just happen Thursday. Quite a, to see the city and the county working together and everybody is like a puzzle, everybody has a heart. I was very proud of our city and our county and the volunteers, what they do. So I'm glad they got, we helped them and they brought us our concerns and.
Anything new, Patrick, you want?
No, no, assistant chief.
Assistant.
Mr. Belma. He's a new assistant chief. He's the one that brought the old charter together.
Did he get those, did they get that paper right back? Those copies, I, I'm wondering if that was the last one?
I'm sure he did, I gave it to him, so I hope he still has it.
Because that was the only remaining copy left or something like that.
And he's working on a draft that they'll eventually look at considering through and the fire department is together to hold on. It looks like things are going well over there. ENCODE is progressing, we talked a little bit about it today. I'll continue to include updates on ENCODE in the next. I recently had a water supply corporation, Mr. Snowden, interest on that.
Have you met with him, sir?
No, what I was going to suggest and I mentioned it to TJ is I think we need to bring Mr. Maldonado and others from the group to agree that we have with him since nineteen ninety-seven. And then we need to meet and we will discuss.
What, kind of a cursing, maybe you need to address your work president or somebody that we're looking at. Just don't want to hit him by surprise like, hey, we're about to go up on your rates.
Well, before we meet, I'd like to have something intelligent to tell. So I'd like to meet with Mr. Maldonado and really agree with his thoughts. And I'd be happy to meet with him and say, by the way, we took this and there's some things that they would like to talk to you about. And to have the attorneys in this party. Because there is one section in that agreement that I mentioned earlier that I'm not receiving. This is, I believe, we should be receiving. Financial audit and gate point, we're all considering to see the audit work to maybe begin a little bit later than September because we're looking at the ENCODE implementation process. And we're trying to dovetail then doing ENCODE and the auditor actually being able to kind of any access information. And ENCODE was a little concerned that the auditor would be in here at the same time as they're here. And so we're trying to schedule something that's a little further. There was a lot of efficiencies that were brought out in the FIA fifteen audit. I've racked it up a copy of the City of Coriso Springs' term planning, which we don't have. The City of Coriso Springs' fiscal budget policy manual, which we never had. We have a cash handling policy procedure manual that I've racked it up that we can parse and actually prove as well. And we've looked at the investment policy manual.
Can I ask you something? Is there a forty?
Forty?
Is that, is that forty?
It's in green.
Is that yours? That's what I'm listening to him.
You're not in it? Yes, okay, full staff.
Am I missing something? I'm sorry.
We'll get, we'll get progress to you. I think there was such a trick one ring report that there was some issues with collating data documentation. But it's in mine, so is it in your?
You just keep on going, sir, we won't listen to you.
Okay, sanitation.
I'm reading, I'm sorry, guys, but I'm reading this line.
Sanitation and trash collection, there should be a copy of the Coriso Springs code in your packets. I think this really addresses what, what concerns were with part of fifty-five gallons room and the safety of our sanitation crew and picking up and providing that service. What I'd like to suggest is that we do a public service announcement. Let people know that disorders, this code exists. And please work with us to be containers that comply with code. And then have at some later point in time, those that aren't complying, have Mr. Ramos actually go out and be the door knockers who notify people that they're operating a crash container. I think we can get him, Mr. Marinas, that sanitation crew will let us know, put you aside, that we're having this problem with and we can address those first.
Sir, I know this is, I'm just going to draw a, but when this sign up here in one of the county put that, do you see that billboard thing there? Yeah, it came into city, because I think they were using electricity, it could be different now. But they had to do, we need to advertise, we could use that. I don't know if you want to get adjusted, we can start maybe putting something on there, maybe notice or something.
Well, you could do that or actually you could have your own sign. I had a discussion with Bobby and Maldonado. And, you know, we could actually use hot phones as its community service. And you could do things with something similar to that right here at City Hall. And also use that as a, as a marquee to notify the public of events and so on and so forth. We felt they were qualified for hot phones and had a little, a little.
Yeah, that's okay.
Want me to look into that?
Either way, the majority is right there.
And that's what I understand, when the gentleman came to, which they can look at, I have all these rights.
Yeah, we need to have all these, you know. We'll work with the county, we'll see what.
Yeah, because that's the thing I said, but like they, that building wasn't, didn't have any electricity. So how, somehow, some way they use electricity for that. I don't remember if I did, but, you know, it's just.
I'll look at some of the.
Thank you.
The bank deposit agreement modified on August the third, it expires on August twenty-second. That's the, the state statute that I was referring to a little earlier. It's actually the state statute that applies to depository agreements. It allows for cities to award this for bank depositors for up to five years. This particular depository, two years, it's up August twenty-second. So we could extend that agreement out another year and go out ahead to the bid. Or we could extend it for a lesser period of time. It's up to the council, we just need an extension at least long enough to allow us to put it out to bid. The last time we put this up to bid, this is the only, First State, First State Bank Devalley was the only bank that. And it's very convenient to work with, because we're very close to you. How many times we've had to sign this signature?
Thirty. I think I'm like three hundred and twenty-two.
And so that's basically it for this report. I've included the grant items in the next report, so the due notice available to, for different improvement projects. It's a chance we might be getting in the underwriting.
Thank you.
You don't have anything from the ship without any? Thank you, sir, for your report. I am act, okay, twenty-four. Discussion on appropriate action or refinations from the current commission committee to possibility of ordering in November twenty-sixteenth election.
I'm here at California and I have an ongoing battle with computers. So Maldonado's taught me to print a backup, a hard copy.
Thank you.
I'm afraid that's going to have to surprise you by first night, I'm sorry about that.
So this is it, no more meetings, right?
No more meetings.
This is the final.
Depending on what your direction is, but. So Roy Ortiz, Mr. Massey, Mr. Daniel, Mr. Duseno, Mr. Ramirez, met. I believe I said six times in the memory, but it was seven times since April, I understand it. Councilor Little was involved with this beginning, is that right? Yes, and what we did was we went line by line and they read the whole charter and decided to rewrite the whole charter. And we condensed it from dozens and dozens and dozens of pages to about nineteen pages. It was quite an undertaking, but the city was well represented with the charter commissioners, had a very good time working with them and getting to know them. There were several kind of big substantive revisions they decided to make. In addition to just sort of some gender neutral language, removing antiquated nineteen fifties language, trying to make it as easy as possible for citizens to understand, renumbering there as possible. We also wanted to ensure proper separation of powers between the council and the city management. I know that in the past from my discussions with commissioners and some other citizens that there have been issues with that. Management in charge of management, council's in charge of policy. So that's reflected in the draft charter. In terms of our process, if you have any questions of what we give them to some of the more, what we use controversial substantive revisions. Answering your questions as far as.
I would like to point out, this is my first time seeing the changes or what was presented to us. But I'll also like to, I'm going to make a comment. There is no seventy-five thousand dollar per year compensation.
You often do that for the council?
That took two meetings if it comes to.
Only charter committees.
Zero seventy-five dollars.
That's when I was going to put it.
We were counting on that.
Well, wait, maybe there is.
Oh, I read it.
All the homies were charter committee members.
I do have a question on what, on what page, on the qualifications for.
Yes.
Only registered voters should be, shall be eligible to hold the office of council member or mayor. I think, isn't there a residency requirement too?
Registered voters of the city, that's a, that's a residency requirement. And there are requirements in state law too. This is as commission asks for it to be written as broadly as possible, so as many people as possible could serve in elected office. This is an implied residency requirement.
So it would be inside city?
Yeah, only registered voters of the city. So if you don't live in the city, you're not a registered voter of the city. And that language was taken from a model, national model city charter.
So what it comes down to is where you're registered, if you're registered.
Registered voters, there's no length requirement there. Some cities have a length requirement, so you had to have lived in the city for a year or several years or six months. But the, and this is, the council makes the ultimate decision on what is presented to the voters and voters have to ratify the council's ultimate decision. So this is a recommendation from the charter commission. You know, section thirteen in the current nineteen fifty-nine city charter has all of these requirements. And the commission decided to narrow it to one requirement, you live in the city.
So what you have in.
Registered voters of the city.
So what you guys, what we're seeing, you have read online, that is what is in the term right now.
Right now.
And that's what y'all are taking out.
Right, and the blue is.
The new.
Yes. And again, all of it, excuse me, all of it has changed. But these are the substantive revisions that required the most discussion. And we thought that Facebook and the blogs here might have the most issue with, so that's why they were pointed out in one way.
On the reading of the qualifications, you have took out the very last one that says convicted of, convicted of offending and altering an officer shall immediately forfeit his office. That did happen here in Coriso Springs.
So we did, if you look at section sixteen, a council member shall forfeit his or her office if the council member fails to meet residency requirements, violates any express prohibition of this charter, is convicted of a crime involving moral perpetuity, or etc. So the policy in the recommend, in the proposed charter, as far as crimes involving moral perpetuity exists. Yeah, it exists. So it's not automatic perpetuity.
So we're looking at how many changes, you said seventeen, or what did you say?
A lot, I mean, everything has changed here and there, just nip and tuck. But the big change is the fiscal year is one, right now it's July to June. The city manager, as we discussed, and the charter commission endorsed unanimously the idea of moving it to the federal fiscal year, which is October to September, which would require some transition intermediary planning. There was, there is an issue in terms of vacancies, how they'd be filled. And overall, it was making it clearer, easier.
So if we approve exactly what you presented to us, there would be how many on the ballot, how many propositions?
So we discussed having the whole charter on the ballot. Unfortunately, after some further review, that's, that's not legal, although we wish it were.
Yeah, there's limitations, right?
Right, so we want to, we discussed as few propositions as possible. When my firm, I wasn't at the front at the time, worked with a Pierceall charter, they had dozens of propositions. I think that that wouldn't be preferable. So I think that the charter commission's policy recommendation on that question is as few propositions as possible. And when it comes time to work on ballot propositions, which, you know, could be soon or it could be delayed a little bit, that's what to discuss, how many it would actually be according to the law and the council's preferences. In terms of timeline, that was one vibrant discussion we had. I know there was some discussion of the November twenty-sixteen charter election, which the council can still order as of today. However, the charter commission thought that having a May two thousand seventeen charter election to coincide with.
Or a general election.
General election, municipal elections would be better in terms of cost. So you don't have to have a city election during the November election. And then also, the May twenty-seventeen election will be about municipal issues. And there'll be more community input and buy-in to a charter that's adopted during elections about municipal issues. That was the guidance from the commission.
So I guess I should ask the time that was given to them for y'all guys to come up with this, would that enough suffice time? Or y'all think I'll need more time to bring more? The commission agreeing with what y'all presented to us?
We're fine, because we did spend some, a lot of time on the discussion.
That's why I'm asking, yeah.
And we went through it, like, with the, with the.
Section by section.
Section by section, we read it, we went back and forth and we felt this was the best, the best thing that we had to offer to you guys. Make it more friendly user, user-friendly, excuse me. And that everybody can, you know, don't have to go through a whole novel. And trying to, you know, get to something that's quite there, nineteen pages, not, nothing to.
An interpretation of it, correct, right?
Exactly, exactly. Anybody can pick it up and they can, okay, this is, this is what it's supposed to be. But a lot of, a lot of it had a lot of old language.
Personally, I feel it's now something that you can give to your government class in high school. And it can be a lesson plan for them, they can learn the city charter because the language will be something that a high schooler can understand as well as somebody that's been in law for fifty, sixty years.
We would read something and we would all like, what did we just read, you know? So he would give us, this is what it's supposed to be, you know? So we did go through all of it and we did, you know, came in with enough time to do it. And hopefully, whatever your recommendation is, either run November, November sixteen, twenty sixteen, or May. The only thing is that we had a question, I was going, TJ was going to mention is that being that the twenty, the November election is more concentrated, going to be more concentrated on the presidential race. This would get lost in the shuffle, going to pay attention, we would have very low turnout. So we figured that, like he said, thinking back on what he said, it's a city election, but we both on the same ballot.
No, I'm laughing because that's our election, we seek reelections.
Well, see, that, that's even better because that was, I think, part of your platform. Part of your platform was that you were going to come in and going to change this. And so why not be at the same time, like, this is what we done, you know, this is what we did.
But at the same time, I, I mean, I'm either for November, maybe, by all means, it needs to get done.
Yes.
It needs to get done. But at the same, I don't want to, I guess if we decide May would be the perfect timing, then I don't want y'all to feel, man, we worked so hard in such little time. Please don't feel that way because, I mean, that's not.
We recommend.
We recommend that because we are.
Yeah, we recommend you make.
That puts me a lot of ease because I know y'all guys work very hard and it's a lot of stuff.
If we said follow flat in our face, then we've said, you know what, we brushed it, we did a poor job at it. That's why we said, you know, and May would be perfect. That's what we all came to agreement, we were referring to.
Okay, I'm, I'm wrapping up.
But that's, that's us.
We want as high of a turnout as possible on this. We don't want to hear in two years, oh, why is this in? oh, why is this in there? You had a chance to vote, you were, it's in the city, it's in the city election, it's not in the presidential election. In November, you're gonna be worried about the state, what's going on in the state, what's going on in our country, I mean, it seems like it's a very controversial election. Our city charter, which we've worked hard on, is gonna fall to the wayside, you might have two hundred people come vote on a city election because it's a separate ballot. As in May, you have, of course, y'all are up for reelection, so that's a mayor, two council spots. Last, last election, what was there, eleven hundred voters? That's eleven hundred people that get a look at it and that puts more of the city in perspective of it and, and if you don't vote, you can't complain.
This gives you enough time to read it and then if people have questions on it, and we also made some suggestion on how we're gonna advertise it, put that off to the community. What was it there, each registered voter or each?
Well, there was a discussion of mailing it to people, that doesn't end up, it's not a legal requirement, but, but the commission was very adamant that as many people had access to the proposed charter as possible and they had as much time as possible to consider it. Very concerned about community buy-in and inputs of process.
Yeah, which is exactly what we want, because most of it's here if it's not the community.
Yeah, I have a question. This is, to clear up in my mind, so you, you can't put a whole charter out to vote on, but you can put changes to an existing charter to vote on, do you understand that?
Yeah.
Okay. Are all of the changes gonna be on the ballot or just some of it? Like you said, some proposals, more proposals, your proposals?
So this is a proposal that was drafted by the charter commission for the council to consider. The council can change what is in this document, put on ballot, for the voters to ratify or not. So if council has, ultimately, after thinking about it for a week or however long, has a disagreement with one of the, with several languages, council can propose something different to the voters.
Yeah. All right, so do we have the whole charter here?
You do, yes.
Okay, so some of it's in black, some of it's in black, you have red.
So there's a memorandum, and I'm sorry, there's a memorandum that was from the charter commission and me, sort of discussing a broad stroke of the charter, trying to accomplish some of the more controversial items. And then later, there is sort of a, the charter document, starting with article one, and there should be six articles.
And so that, so that, that would be the same, you're gonna?
So at the front, there's this introduction with, like, third generation before the copy, what is that?
It's the old charter.
The old charter, the whole thing?
No, the whole thing, the whole charter is a foreigner, it's something, it's a document.
Okay, well, that's, that's my confusion, is that there's?
And then we have this, what is this?
I'm sorry, I'm, excuse me, more package.
Well, I was gonna ask, but I didn't.
So the proposed charter, so the proposed charter that is, is this right here?
Look, I have this, right? The thing, I have it there.
That's, that's the proposed charter.
So all this is what they're proposing and is what we have in blue and red over here, is it here too?
And then that is a memorandum just explaining, and I should, I should have done a better job of coverage of this stuff, I'm sorry about that. That's a memorandum from us explaining what we're doing.
Yes, I saw that.
And then this is the actual document. So this is eleven, eleven pages.
Is it gonna get presented to the voters?
That's what would be the presentation of the voters.
Eleven pages.
So this thing labeled draft city charter, that's the, eleven pages. Before that are the highlights of?
That, yeah, that's the executive summary.
And then before that, okay, charter commission, okay, and then before that?
So it's eleven pages, not nineteen, sir?
I may have spoken on the other pages, but it should be, it should be six articles. Should be six articles.
It's six articles.
So we can reason it out.
We can check if it's one. I wanna make sure what that was supposed to be.
So.
I have another question. On the three oh six canvassing elections, because of what happened in the past, you all have, um, the city council show attendance and the pair of results of all elections at a meeting on the Tuesday following each elections, are there, like remedies, like that happened the last time, if they don't do it, is there a remedy?
They are not, they forfeit their office if they violate.
Where is that?
That's in, I'm sorry.
And there is, and I know, we all had that in mind.
No, yeah.
And I know it's there somewhere, but just for peace of mind.
Actually, that was one of the words, where the state law said they had to.
Oh, yeah, that is the next one.
Right, there's a state law provision and then there's also two point oh five, there's a state law provision that addresses that, and there's also two point oh five B, council member shall forfeit his or her office if violates any, who violates the party, so. But there's a state law requirement too, so there would be the state involved.
Okay, so what we're reading in this page, all these eleven pages, is what, is the changes already included or this is?
Yes, that's the new charter, that's proposed charter, I'm sorry.
That if voted, is going in to replace?
The, yeah, that's, we have just applied the pages.
A lot of it was tax office.
And that's off to you guys, so that's why I'm saying.
I know you had a concern on the council member meeting, missing three in a row, but if, how do we address that? How, if y'all feel, uh?
That they would ask for a leave?
Ask for leave, that then it's a problem, if it was a political situation, maybe, and I can see that.
We ever came to a great resolution of a couple issues and that was one of them. So that's something that.
But was it addressed as consecutive or three?
Three consecutive. Three consecutive, if they missed three consecutive, but all the time, there would be a medical issue or a family and, and, I mean, most, normal people would ask either for a leave or give the excuse that I have a medical condition or whatever, and, and if it was something serious, you would think that they would ask to be excused from the council completely and for you to fill it there.
I will say, this is seeing awesome stuff they had never seen before.
Yes, that's the only.
It was awakening of what is happening now.
I think all of us would be in that, but there's others.
We, we thought about how to go about it, but then our one, the one big concern came up was, let's just say the shoes were the other way and the person was missing, that was sick, and there was two council people or three councilmen that wanted that person out and it was, because they wanted to get one of their people in to kind of push their stuff through, and they said, nope, we don't consider that an excuse to go, you broke the charter. So we wanted to try to protect the council, the council as much as possible, but at the same way have the checks and balances, so that's why we left him like it was.
So y'all didn't touch that one, that's what I'm hearing. Where's that one at?
Well, it's, I think we left it with the three consecutive.
Two point oh five.
So there, it's like there's no vehicle in there that says how the council will excuse or not excuse.
Right, so that was one of the issues we kind of left open for our council, yeah, so, and that's another reason that there was a recommendation that there be a delay until May, because the council has to order reelection in the next two weeks. So there are a few outstanding items and those are the ones I addressed in the executive memo, we addressed the executive memo, that the council may need to make a final determination on, um, but that the proposal was to sort of take off the section for, for council.
So does that mean we have to have this mailed down in two weeks?
If, for November election. Oh, which is a reason for.
We're gonna do a mail-in.
But if you think about it, if it's gonna, we're gonna wait till May, that comes out, we do it at the end of January, we call that election end of January, mid-February, so we would have to, then figure it out.
Yeah.
Right?
Just give everybody time to think about it, because we are gonna have to wait.
Yeah, okay, so we don't, we don't need to go through this tonight and start?
We were, we were planning on it. If we were, if we were on a six-day agenda, we could do that.
That's a Oscar one.
Another round for.
I'm buying, right?
There was some serious discussion of having one of these meetings at the tavern, but this is never off the ground.
Never got away.
So if we decide all this, can we present all this in, in say May? All these?
Yes.
Because I know you were saying that we were subject to a limit on ballot, a number of items.
That was my question.
I thought, I heard you said there was a limit of items we put on the ballot.
The charter commission urged having as few ballot propositions as possible just for simplicity, there's not a legal limit, because you can have a whole lot.
We can have all these if we want and all we need.
Take individual, an individual section, that gets a little tedious.
I thought there was something we could not do.
Can we put it like in section, section?
That's what I was thinking. This is, uh, divided that.
I'll tell you, I've seen it when, when the state has had like a bunch of constitutional amendments.
Right.
Um, they just advertised what the heading was going to be in the ballot and then just a short description and then, so that the ad was only, well, a reasonable size because, let's face it, you want people to at least read it. And then if they wanted to see it even further, of course, the state has it on their website and such, but it's, it's short enough that you could, um, have copies available for people to read, you could put on the website. We could look into, into how to print it and what that cost would be as well.
Put on the ballot. Will it just be one ballot proposal, approve this new charter?
We were hoping that we could, but we cannot, so it would have to be divvied up somehow.
Each, each line?
Each article is what we're hoping, but if we can't do that, it will have to be each section, which would be, you know, a lot.
Okay, so we could have as few as five?
Right.
Uh, ballots, what do you call it?
As, as few as that or as many as?
Yes.
Seventy or whatever it would be, so.
What's gonna determine that, you look up what the requirement is?
Yes.
Okay.
We'll, we'll mail it down with the Secretary of State's office and all that once we have their grant.
That's, that's all. Things always have a purpose.
Yeah.
Like why they rid the way they did.
Right.
All right.
Good work, everybody. I want to thank, we can even thank you.
It was very interesting.
It was interesting, man.
But?
It was very interesting. Thank you. You've done a lot of things for the community and the city for the years to come, I kind of think that has years, so thank you very much.
Great job. Good, good job. So when's the next meeting?
Sure.
There's a tavern, it's, it's. Okay, so then what do you, what type of action do you need from us tonight?
Or is it, at least on May, we're gonna decide on the name.
The way we read, the discussion on appropriate action recommendations from the charter commission, have they already recommended to us that, so y'all recommending a May election?
Well, ballot, I mean, the agenda says November, possibly.
Possibly, or?
Yeah, oh, okay.
So we can go with the possibly, May?
We can table until, you know, pending.
Just table it and then we'll bring it back, or take May on, is that good?
Yeah, because if we table it, we've already missed the deadline for November anyways, because when the next time we're gonna meet, it's gonna be after the deadline.
Maybe a special meeting, we can just concentrate on that.
Just on that, so then you have to wait here all this time.
No.
Special meeting.
Well, in the agenda, they say November, but my impression is y'all would really prefer May ballot issues, ballot, I think, before the term.
Propositions or propositions or?
Can you put the November language on there so that the council could order the election if that was the direction?
Okay.
So we just table the item? I'll need a motion for either, for item point four, motion in the table item point four, the charter commission, the development of the election. Motion has been made by Councilman Modernis, seconded by Councilman Johnson. All in favor, Nikita Sayanay? Aye. All opposed, same side, motion is carried. Thank you. Thank you.
Hey, thanks, appreciate it.
Your name will stay there for another forty, fifteen years.
We're hoping it changes more of this.
Changemakers. Thank you for using so much. Yes, thank you.
You're staying?
Yeah. Okay, number item twenty-five, update on purchasing land from U.C., which you got for us there? I know you're not bothered.
We're in discussions with HEB and there's a one million dollar for twenty acre tract code given for the property that?
The, yeah.
Oh, and what's the rest of it?
One million. We're ongoing discussion.
Was that twenty acres?
Yes. We're, we're in discussions with HEB, but there, there's not been a hard number given, so we need it. No, they're, HEB's a little.
They're slow?
They're tough to deal, yeah, because they have bureaucracy and they're always, they're always giving you a hard time and stuff like this, so.
So it's not, nothing?
Right, so we need our time just to work on it.
Yeah.
Yeah, all right.
Thank you for the answer.
Okay, we got our number twenty-six, discussion on appropriate action to consider purchasing for community entrance points signs with hotel multiple funds. Let's sort it out.
Well, I heard this was becoming Ms. Quintero's idea, but then I heard Ms. Malonis was also involved.
Let me tell you what happened, you see, I'm coming back from the doctor and my son and I, I'm coming through Sabina and my mom, my son says, Mom, look at that sign, I wake up, I go, oh, and we turned around and we went back and it was the sign, and that said, welcome to, uh, morning and Sabina, whatever their mascot is. So, uh, we were just wondering, I was just, what, what happened, Quintero, was something that we could do?
Work out Isla Springs?
And whatever fund you, I do know you can use stock or general fund. The sign's not that expensive, but it would, uh, it would promote our city, it would promote our, our, not just our district, but our school community.
I don't have a problem with welcome signs, I know, and I'm talking about years ago, previous, maybe you weren't even on the.
I was the one bought it, back in two thousand three, two, and entrance, we were always wanting entrance, like, welcome to Crazy Springs. These are good signs, but at the same time, are we promoting our city or the? No, 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 there's another one they sent, and you are correct, that was just an idea. You are correct, that's an idea. There was another one, he emailed me today and I think I emailed it to you? I don't know. I didn't make copies of it.
No?
And, and then I texted it to you, I asked him to make one, see, he only did the sample that I took of the highway sign, y'all, he could do whatever he want, it was just the starting point. So when he emailed me, uh, today, well, it did say Crazy Springs, but it's very small. But again, we can design whatever we want. When I was serving here in the council, we, you're right, Mayor, we discussed it many years ago, I'm gonna say several years ago, and we still haven't done anything about it.
They had even brought up at that time, I don't know if you, well, you go through that, because you go to San Antonio, you go through Bigwell's, Bigwell's has some real pretty planes.
Thank you.
I mean, and we could look into something like that. Like I said, I don't have a problem with the welcome sign, by all means, like you said, it's been in the process, but it hasn't ever been. But I do have a problem with, I'm with you.
Yeah, we just changed the wording from that sign, that was very young, and I don't care, we're just starting the discussion and that excites me, because that was, if you look, I'm gonna show you exactly their sign, I think that's your chapter, and, um.
I know, we do have Walcott on our.
See, and that was just, their sign, he just changed the wording, it wasn't say, it was stone, their sign says entering jacket country. So I texted him, I said, can you do something with that word? Yeah, and so, just so we could, from the sign company here, uh, the thing was just to start the discussion and I'm glad that he put it on the agenda that quick and then we could start and agree that we need some kind of entrance points for our community.
That's cool, and I do like what, what Bigwell's. That's cool. And I do like what Bigwell's...
Yeah, it's very plain and nice.
Little wall, three D, wall iron.
Also like when Ponce, they don't drive through hell. Those countries don't hurt.
I saw that one too and I told myself, no, I didn't picture that one.
It's more of a permanent structure and maybe as opposed to something that might be not so permanent, looking at that kind of sign, which would be eligible, according to our city attorney, for expenditure upon, since we're talking about promoting the community and welcoming people to the community. So the expense could be incurred through the...
So can you bring samples like what other cities have? So we can try to...
I'm thinking that, but then like have a space next to it. So maybe we could put the museum sign, the library sign, something you're directing, what else we have in our community.
Now we're talking electronic sign.
Yeah, that one that y'all have good up front, let's go put it.
Yeah, put it in three inches to the city.
Cut metal.
We can let it in designs and run it back and help.
That would be great.
I would like something in stone because we can have somebody traveling from wherever. Oh, look, that looks nice. Let's take a picture. For instance.
Well, you're right. And like that, we're, we're no... We have a wildflower that we...
The sunflower.
To Virginia County. And the thing about that, I mean, a Bigwell sign and that type of sign is they've had it there for years. They don't touch it. They put a little paint on it every time.
What's my guy's name? Where at?
Like a stucco, right?
A billboard would require maintenance.
Did that sign still live?
I'm thinking about the...
The wildflower one? I don't want to be touched with it, but welcome to Virginia County.
No, I don't even remember that. There, and the Chamber of Commerce had a one Friso, John Ayers name on it. And I think that sign may still be there.
That would be a good, starting tier place or, you know, you can handle it, right? We can look around too. I'm gonna look around too. I want some eyes. I want something on all avenues.
Yeah.
We have what, one?
Some flower. Yeah. I'm gonna say wildflower. I'm interested.
That'd be nice.
A nice fabrication with like wire, I mean.
The wire. The wire, you know, we're not for the jam, we're not for the cap. I know it's more work on the place, but...
Do a Google search. Yeah, Google, that's what, yeah. Pinterest.
But it's for our community.
Okay, so do you need an action from us to go ahead and get you started on that? So...
For entry signs.
It's calling for an action, so...
To support the community, yes. Just authorize me to go ahead and proceed and I'll come back with some designs that y'all can look at. Once we decide on a particular design, we can go ahead and look at pricing and come back with a budget out of a hot fund to pay for the sunflower.
So we need a motion.
I'll make a motion. We approve the consideration, the purchase for Mr. Maldati to look into it, to purchase a community entrance sign for the foreign entrance sign.
Motion has been made by Councilwoman Morales. Do I have a second?
Thanks.
Seconded by Councilwoman Fuente. All in favor, Niki by say nine?
Aye.
All opposed, same sign? Motion is carried. Now we go to the main one. Item number twenty-seven, enter. My God. Okay, motion has been made by Councilwoman Morales.
Thanks for all your calls. Really appreciate it.
Seconded by Councilman Johnson. All in favor, Niki by say nine?
Aye.
All opposed, same sign? Motion is carried at ten thirty-five.
Oh, my gosh.